Okay. I will call the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting Thursday, October 4th, 2018 to order at 7:00 PM. If I could have the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is a presentation by Scott Fur, our emergency, our emergency operations update. Scott?
Good evening. Slide please. All right, we're just going to give you a quick update of where we're at past the tornado event, status on the after-action report and the way forward. Slide. After-action report's still under construction right now. I'm at about 20 points of discussion and recommendations. I'm combining a few, I'm breaking some out. It's not going to stay at 20. I suspect there's probably going to be 30 to 35 when I'm done. Again, the page, the report's probably going to be about 60 pages. I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet, but there is a lot of information to discuss there. Last week, we met with Region 5. They came down to do their after-action report. We had a very productive meeting with them, lasted about two hours, and then we had a separate meeting discussing some IT issues also that lasted about another hour and a half. Overall, very well. Reached back out to them this week, referenced some other stuff from Region 5, their meeting with Danbury. We were talking about the shelter that they set up in Danbury specifically. They're going to give me some more information included in our report on that. And again, still looking at the 1st of January for publishing or approval of the report by the Board. Initial impressions, it was a good job. However, there's always room for improvement. We know that. Communications is still our top priority, both with the Board of Selectmen, with the citizens of the town, and with the other entities we were working for, working with. Last mile issues, and I'll discuss that at the end, but last mile issues are going to be resonant in anything that goes on with supply chain. And if we treat this like a supply chain issue, you're going to have those problems. Slide. Progress right now, we're already implementing some of the solutions as you saw during the hurricane when I designed a communication medium for the Board of Selectmen to push out to you to keep you and up to the loop and involved, and at least understand that we are watching it what the preparations were. So that was one of the findings that came out of that. Also, we're going to put, we're trying to put together right now, myself and one other volunteer, a citizens disaster preparedness education. Our goal is to present that quarterly, can roughly be about an hour. We're going to do it different times, different locations, and different days around the town. That way, we can get the maximum penetration for all those that desire to come and observe that. The report is progressing, about 33 pages right now. And like I said, it's still going to add, but I haven't done anything at the end of the conclusion wrap-up. A lot of that's still in the body itself about upon, from what we have seen that that happened. I'm going to assign a responsible department that's going to be responsible for implementing that improvement and also with the suspense. So it's not just going to be a report that's hanging out there on the shelf going, okay, patted ourselves on the back and walked away. No. Where we see we're going to get improvements with, there's going to be a date and a responsible party assigned to that. Slide. Way forward, I recommend we continue with the after-action report. I don't see a reason not to. We're not waiting on the after-action report to implement some of the solutions. If we can get it started now, like the citizens' preparedness briefing, we're going to do that, and also some of the other communication mediums. Last mile issues, we have to realize that the last mile in the supply chain is always the most difficult thing to solve. If you look at that also, you're going to have that with any type of disaster response. It's going to be almost some of the exact same problems. That last mile of getting supplies, they're getting to people, that's going to be the toughest nut to crack. No matter what solutions you're going to come up with, you're always going to have an issue there. So we're going to work towards that. Are we going to solve it 100%? No. Are we going to do better next time than we did last time? Absolutely. And that's all I've got for an update right now.
Any questions from the Board?
Money's from NEMA, went to the state, but when do they come here?
(laughing). I'm not going to touch that.[281.82][281.85](laughing). I'll leave that in the political realm.
We're working on that.
No, I just want to say thank the updates you gave as, as we got word in early September when the hurricane was potentially threatening us. Were very helpful and I think helped inform the town to at least prepare, you know, the citizens that, just in case, be prepared, provide some, some research. So I think just that alone, as we learn from this, is, is an improvement.
Communication's always the weakest link, and there's always things we can do better there. So as we start to see some of the results from that come back and start to get some more feedback, we can refine those also.
Scott, are you sending us those communications? Then they are helpful. I agree with Mike. I mean, it's good to know ahead of time.
Yeah, when I, when I make up the storyboards that I pushed out at the very end last time, what my goal is now is that I did not make a storyboard up for Leslie because it's going to stay 500 miles off the coast. If it was to impact the East Coast, you would be receiving those storyboards right now saying, okay, here's what it is, here's what we assume is going to happen, and here's what our best guess is, and here's the preparations that we're taking.
Would, it'd be useful to send that out to other people in the town besides just the Board, or?
I would like to exercise it with the Board for one full cycle, meaning one more event, because I pushed it out to you at the very end of that last event. If you see that it's got information on there that we want to release, absolutely. But I prefer to, I hate to say work the kink out, kinks out on the Board, but really, I prefer to do that to make sure that we're all happy with the way it's going and we're happy with the information it contains. It was a good test last time, but we didn't get to the point where we actually used it. So I don't know if the right information's in there that, because it's tool really for you to maintain situational awareness and communicate with the town. I have no problems releasing it, the Board does.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll agree. I thought those were helpful and streamlined and all, you know, a lot of information right there. I, I was just, had a question I'm sure a number of people are interested in, is what your timing's like to complete the after-action?
My goal is to get it to the Board mid-November, because you're going to get your chop at it and go, you know, we didn't see this happen. We saw this happen instead, because I'm one person with one set of eyes. I'm trying to get other people's input, but I always come with a jaded lens because I was in the middle of it. So I would like to give the Board time to go over it and provide feedback to me going, we like this, we don't like this, we saw this, we didn't see this. And then I'll wrap it up for your approval for publication. And my goal is to get that done by 1 January.
And I think also what we've talked about is you may not have seen something, but in fact, it did happen. So you, you might bring that out, and there'll be clarification. Not just because you didn't see it happen didn't mean it didn't happen, but why that, so you understand. Because we've actually, you have sat down with the group and gone through that, and people miss things like of what, the perception of what happened at that time in the timeline. And you find out that, and then we research it through the records or the police calls that it really did happen. All right? Any other questions, Scott?
You know, I have a hard time hearing the questions back here.
So we'll get a little closer to the mics.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, next up is the, my Selectmen's update on ambulance service. It's pretty much about the, what's out in the public, what's being said in the public, and what this is all about. So, tell us how, oop, okay. Let me get my cards here. So things I can, there are, there are things that I can talk about, and there are things that we cannot talk about, because there is a public hearing coming up. There's attorneys involved, and we can't give away strategies and what that's about, but we can talk about some things. So I'm here to clear up some misunderstandings of what the application says and what is being applied for. There's out in the, out in the public is that there's a, trying to be a taking of the ALS, of the BLS from the Southbury Ambulance and the Heritage Village ambulance. So on the first slide is a history of the timeline where applied for only the BLS for Southbury Training School. You can read that. The primary, the embol there is we've applied for the primary service area designation, basic life support of the Southbury Training School campus, and advanced life support for the entire town. So, basic life support is what Southbury Ambulance provides to a certain geographical area of Southbury. Heritage Village ambulance obviously handles Heritage Village. The Southbury Training School basic life support is the third service, and it's for basic life support transport. So they pick up patients, they transport them, basic life support. And I'll show you the application coming up that, that is what's only being applied for. So you can read the slide. I don't think I have to read for it, read it, but there's obvious, I want to get out there, the executive sessions that have been taking place about a transition of the Southbury Training School services for emergency services over there, which is including the fire department services, et cetera. It's, it's all that services to try and get there. So if I could have the next slide. So on this one, Southbury Ambulance would keep their basic life support primary service area, that's called a PSA, for the entire town except for Heritage Village and the Training School ambulance, the same as they do today. There would be no change. You have to understand that even if the town wanted to take over their PSA, that the department, the DPH, Department of Mental, or Department of DPH.
Public Health.
A lot of acronyms, will not allow you, if they're giving the service, you just simply cannot take it. So, not that we want to, but even if we did, it's impossible to take that away from them from DPH. You just cannot do it. So the town of Southbury always has and continues to be responsible for the funding, for funding Campion Ambulance to provide the advanced life support function to the entire town, which is the town's responsibility. Southbury has provided paramedic service to the town of Southbury for close to 30 years. Always have, going to continue to provide it, which is our responsibility. We do it currently at the recommendation of the EMS Committee, which is chaired by Geraldine Hoyt, and we do it through a flycar paramedic. That's existing system now. This here, the proposal encompasses two services, the licensed transport of the primary service area of the Southbury Training School, and the designation of the primary service, it's a font that didn't come through on the change, area to provide ALS, advanced life support, paramedic service to the geographical boundaries of the town of Southbury. So, basic life support transport, that's a key word, basic life support, transport the patient. If you look here, the advanced life support is a non-transport service. Advanced life support, paramedic, would not transport a patient. That's the basic life support transport, okay? And this is part of the application. So, this is a continued part of the application, okay? The paramedic fire, this is what we've stated in there, a paramedic provider model is a contact between the town of Southbury and a commercial provider. That's Campion Ambulance, I talked about that, and it's been designed since like the early 90s. And we continue to provide that at the recommendation of the emergency management, the EMS Committee, who's made up of the ambulance services. Now, currently, the paramedic service is unassigned. So it's up for grabs. It's out there, it's not assigned, the PSA is not assigned. So, basic life support is assigned right now to the Southbury Ambulance area. Heritage Village PSA for basic life support is assigned to Heritage Village, the area of Heritage Village. Southbury Training School PSA for basic life support is assigned to the state of Connecticut for the residents of the geographical area. However, the paramedic PSA is not secured. So, we're looking to get the PSA under control for the paramedic service. What does that mean? Again, what if it's assigned to us and they said, you now have the PSA? It gives us the same control. We can continue with the flycar paramedic as we're doing now. We can do an, a, a paramedic in town, whatever model works best for the citizens of Southbury. So, that's okay. Now, the next slide. So this here, what I found, I had a meeting with Geraldine Hoyt. Is Geraldine here? Hi Geraldine. Did we talk?
We did.
Okay. What I found out through some misunderstanding and some confusion about this application, if you, we have the geographic areas to be served in implementing the proposed service. The ambulance, geographical boundaries of the Southbury Training School for the ambulance. ALS, non-transport boundaries of the town of Southbury. Again, stated in the application, the base, the life, the ambulance, basic life support geographical of Southbury Training School. In I, it says population estimated to be served in implementing the proposed service. If you look on, right there, I, on the basic ambulance, it says 1,000 at the Southbury Training School, population. That's obviously, obviously not the population of the town of Southbury. That's 1,000. Now, there's less than 200 patients at the training school. However, there is staff that comes in during the day around the clock, so we put that, we don't know the exact number, but it's about 1,000 people. It's an estimate. Advanced life support, the paramedic side of it, non-transport, we don't transport the patient, 20,000 people within the geographical boundaries of the town of Southbury, which is what we serve now. There's no change. It's just that we control the PSA for the future of Southbury. On, and that was, Geraldine, can you, that was the, that was the difficulty, that, that line that makes it look like we're going after the basic life support of the entire town, which we're trying to get clarified. We've called up to Hartford. We're trying to get them to either write an email or give a clarification that this application ensure the ambulance services that is not the intent of the town of Southbury to go after the basic life support of the two other ambulance services. It's not possible to do it. We never discussed doing it, and we don't want to do it. Nobody here's ever discussed it. It's never been brought up in a discussion. So, I understood when I saw this what the particular line was of something that they saw and was looking, and I assured them, and I can assure you the Board here, there's no, and I don't think anybody here would ever say we ever discussed that going forward about taking the basic life support or doing it, and clearly.
I can't recall any discussion of that.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I agree there was no discussion on that, but you, you, you did ask Geraldine a question and begin to get commentary. I'd like to, I mean, if possible, I'd like to hear Geraldine's response, if that's.
Sure.
Yeah, if please, I'd like to invite Geraldine to the mic, so everyone can hear.
Letter J, basic ambulance, town of Southbury. I don't think I need the mic.
If anyone can't hear, let her know.
It's for the streaming, yeah.
Okay, you need the mic. Letter J, basic ambulance, town of Southbury.
Can you just give your?
Geraldine Hoyt, Service Chief, Southbury Ambulance.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. But this is where Geraldine, and I understand why she was upset and the ambulance service was upset, list the boundaries of proposed area service quotations to be outlined on the map. So I absolutely understand where that concern came from. This is the map that is submitted to.
Is that the next page of the application, Jeff?
It's part, at the application where they actually, and I think they do this so that you absolutely are clear about what you're, what it is. And you can see the ALS, non-transport, is the entire town of Southbury. And if you look at these dotted lines, these are the geographical areas of the training school. To clarify what this is about. Go ahead, Geraldine.
Oh, I'm, I'm just going to answer your questions, and then when it's time for public speaking, I have a prepared statement.
So, that, did we have, we, we talked about this, and this was the concern you raised to me?
Yes.
Okay. So they're concerned.
Can we go back to the page prior, please?
So, it was brought to our attention the J where it says basic ambulance, and we can get that clarified on the application somehow, but we have to make sure that DPH is okay with the way that is and what that means. And I think what they're saying is, what, within what geographical area is that? So that was the confusion. But the rest of the application is BLS, 475 at the Southbury Training School, the number of calls. So we're, we're pretty clear. If you go to the next page, is the geographical area outlined for the application. So, do you have, I mean, other than public comment, is there something, is there a question from, you want?
You asked her a question.
Yeah.
To clarify, let her respond to the question. That's all I think.
I did. Letter J says the boundaries of the town of Southbury. So as long as that's in black and white, I have to contend that the town of Southbury, for Southbury EMS, is trying to take all EMS in the town of Southbury. That has not been corrected as of business end today, October 4th, 2018. So I stand my ground.
Is that, is that the limit of your concern with the application?
No, it is not.
So when would be the appropriate time to hear the remainder of the concerns? Because I think, I guess.
Okay, let me, let me get through.
I'd like to let Jeff finish his presentation, and then I'd like to invite Geraldine, and then we can go to public comment. And George probably on behalf of.
So, you want to stay there, you want to just wait?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. So, so J shows this, but it says to be outlined on the map. We certainly can make clarification of that with DPH, make sure that it's in there. But the, all the application says is basic life support for the geographical area of the training school, and advanced life support for the entire town, if you go to the next slide. All right? The town of Southbury does not intend to take over or close down Southbury Ambulance or Heritage Village Ambulance. The town is, the application is approved, will assume basic life support at the Training School campus, and advanced life support for the entire town, which is currently provided through a contract with Campion Ambulance. So the town of Southbury pays for the paramedic, intercept services provided by Campion Ambulance. Some of these, of this expense is returned to the town through the billing. So, that could be, we pay about 287, 80-some thousand dollars a year for the service from Campion. Depending on the number of calls and the payment, we get anywhere from 100 to 120,000 dollars re, sent back to us for the money, for reimbursement, because they get that call, there's a billing for that ALS call. So that money is returned through billing for that ALS, because we provide the contract. Campion Ambulance through a contract with the town currently provides advanced life support for the entire town. Do we have another? And, and something that should be understood, the training school gave up in 2018 their ba, their advanced life support. They downgraded. Southbury covers the training school with the paramedic PS, with the paramedic contract. We give the advanced life support to that geographical area now. We provide that to the state, to the, to the clients up there and whatnot. So we're already, we're, we took that over, we're already providing that. They, they downgraded from that, and we take care of that. So, there's a report that's going to cost $5 million per year, and Eric, that's completely unsubstantiated. Town pays Campion Ambulance through a contract 284,200 dollars this year for the contract. Given perspective that we run a 32-person police department with all the vehicles, all the police salaries, everything that goes along into the budget at 2.6 million dollars. So, just, we, it's not, it's not a $5 million operation. There are many different ways to enhance or change or do that we, we can. If you want to, if we feel a paramedic during 24 hours a day, seven days a week was proposed by Campion, by Danbury Ambulance? Or Western Connecticut Healthcare at one time, but there was not a backup paramedic. So it's not inconceivable that we could get an embedded paramedic, but we control the PS, the PSA for the paramedic contract. Are we out of slides?
Jeff, you had mentioned a couple other support items earlier, one being that the town provides dispatch service for Southbury and Heritage Village ambulance, is that true?
Yes.
And also provides maybe some fuel.
They, they, they get fuel off our tanks.
Yeah. So I just.
But I think, I think something else that has to be explained here about this application. DPH looks at these applications coming in. Right behind the application of the town of Southbury for the advanced life support for the entire town, advanced life, paramedic, the basic life support of the training school, we're also looking at getting something that very few ambulance companies or people have, or municipalities have, and that's a transport license. The next application behind this is Danbury Ambulance. They will look at the Danbury Ambulance application and determine if we don't get this, they could determine that Danbury Ambulance is capable and can and will. An award, and their application is a verbal mirror of what the town's application is that we're putting in. If they get awarded the PSA for the paramedic, the basic life support, they will also get that transport license. The, then they control the paramedic contract, or paramedic in town. What does that mean? Per, Danbury Ambulance is very close, has a very close relationship with Western Connecticut Healthcare. So it's not, it could be believed that the Danbury Ambulance would gear towards Western Connecticut Healthcare. We have two hospitals in Waterbury that are being, essentially been bought out and are being reconstructed. Will that influence where patients go? And what effect will that have on the hospitals that are on our other border? Which are part of our North Dakota Valley Council of Governments, which is a group that works together. And bringing those hospitals back up, if you, is important. You know the troubles in Waterbury, rebuilding a city that's basically on our border. So, we've seen, Waterbury Hospital has shown a big presence in, in a new building. St. Mary's is in the building. Campion Ambulance, who is our paramedic flycar, is also opposing us. And AMR is opposing us. AMR has no presence in the town of Southbury. AMR is opposing this application, and I'll tell you why. Campion, AMR, and Danbury Ambulance does not want someone else to have a transport license. That is the holy grail of an EMS operation, if anybody understands EMS. So, we have a border. This will influence, if it goes to Danbury, how we run, how this town will operate. Now, I want to go on to something about this cost. By holding the paramedic contract, PSA, that we can't be taken away as long as we provide this service to the town. In the strategic plan, it says in there, the draft, I've been reading it. It says we should look into what it would take to run a paid fire department. We know it's hard to get our volunteers, and we know the difficult time is Monday through Friday during the week to get a fireman to roll a truck, because we're all at work, everybody's at work. One of the models of analyzing the cost is to have our firemen, if there's two, to roll the truck, one, whatever. roll the truck, one, whatever the model works. In many cities, the paramedics, the firemen are paramedics. So, the paramedic, the fireman can respond as paramedic, and that money for that call would be coming back to the town if we should need to create a fire department, uh, uh, have some paid firemen during the week. And they would be there five days a week, and then you can model it different ways, you can put them in. So, in the future, it is important that we hang on, that we take control, the municipality of that paramedic side of this PSA. The basic life support is being done wonderfully through our two ambulance services. This is a very small footprint in here, the, the, the training school. And eventually, they're going to close the training school. We've known this for a long time, they're going to close it. And, there'll be nothing but real estate over there. So, this is a point where they want to transition these services, the state wants to get this done, and, and the fire department, and we've been meeting about these services. So, um, get my thoughts here together. That's a lot to, to, to absorb. And I think I was, it's pretty clear about the, that basic life support, advanced life support. But I think that there's a misunderstanding about that other slide in the application J. And we can get that fixed, we can get that straightened out. There's nobody here that has ever talked about going at, taking over the basic life support of the whole, because they're doing a great job. They're doing a great job, so, all right? So, at that, I will ask if Geraldine would come up, because, to explain what her concerns are.
There were questions.
You go ahead first, I think.
Well, let me add to your questions, and maybe they'll, they'll cover it.
So, go ahead, Jason, you were, you were to ask.
Well, then, my, my, my question before was, what were your other concerns about the application, other than that item J? What, what are the other issues? I'm just concerned with Ms. Hoyt's other concerns are about the application, other than item J.
Where do I start? Mr. Scott Furr said earlier that communications is always a lackey. Okay, so, when, when you guys were all called by the training school and say that this was evolving, the first people you should have thought of was the people that are providing EMS right now. No communication, secret meetings, okay? All those meetings up there, were any of those public meetings? I think I saw everything under executive section. So- I am in your mind.
The mic is, the mic on.
Mic may be turned off.
How about now?
Nope.
Stop it.
I think I'm not on my three minutes. Yeah, how about now?
I am not in charge of the mic, okay?
Just use mine.
We're going to put in the budget for a new-
Okay, we'll use this one for now. Cover, so. Okay, here we go. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues, and there's a few people that are going to speak after me, that I think we're going to cover all these questions that you have. Uh, concerns, uh, you know, we, the town does not pay $287,000. About $140,000 a year is collected and paid to the town. What makes you think you're going to collect any more than that, if you're in control? You do 100 calls, you get paid for 50 of them, the money comes to the town. The town is in charge, you do 100 calls, 50 of them are paid for, the other 50 are lost. That's a fact. That's a fact. AMR is in the front of this town. They have contracts with all the healthcare facilities in this town. As does Campion's, and Danbury ambulance does not. Danbury ambulance does do non-emergency transports for Southbury Training School. This letter J, that wasn't changed. July 19th, there was a hearing in Waterbury, Region 5 hearing. July 20th, front page of the local Waterbury paper stated what our concerns were. July went by, August went by, September went by, we're in October. My phone rings last week, I called Mr. Mandel several times, "How can Southbury ambulance help?" Okay, Southbury Training School is 6% of the geographical area of this town. 6%. Southbury ambulance does 88%. Heritage, the other 6%. So, when you're thinking about EMS, why aren't you thinking about me and Southbury ambulance? Why are you thinking about calling in AMR and Campion's? Called in everybody, except Heritage Village and Southbury ambulance. Come on up, George. The application was submitted July 20th, it's dated July 20th and July 26th throughout various pages. Okay? There was no, no, no's to anybody. So, this is a takeover, this is a government takeover, okay? Do we really want the government running EMS? The government can't run anything. Look at DMV. Look at Obamacare, okay? But the secrets, that's the problem. Okay, now, Southbury ambulance has an application in with the state of Connecticut right now, for ALS. Because I got stonewalled by this exact board, still in unfinished business. I wasn't even given the decency that it's going to be put on hold. Those are my concerns, Jason. And, and my other constituents are going to cover a bunch more. But, Danbury ambulance, the only reason why Danbury ambulance has an application in is because every call, every time he called to get information about the town of Southbury's application, he didn't get anywhere. So, he said, I won't use the words, because they're not very nice, he said, "I'm going to put in my own application in." And he only has an application in for BLS at Southbury Training School. He did not mirror the town of Southbury's application. So, the public is speaking, this is only part of the people that are opposed to this, and I think that this board should be embarrassed that they didn't communicate with the people that do this. And I don't care what secrets are behind it, or what advantages, you need the people. The people is what makes this town a community. When there's a problem in EMS, boy, do I hear about it. But it's the people, the people come together and support. Do you have anything you want to add to their questions, before we get on the tick-tock of three minutes? George Goodwin, who's the president of Heritage Village, and this involves him as much as it involves Southbury ambulance, so I think it's fair, he at least gets a 6%.
Heritage Village ambulance, just to be clear.
That's my geographic, 6%, and I'll only take one minute. Good evening, George Goodwin, Heritage Village, 984. And I am the service chief, gratefully. Yeah, I think what the taxpayers actually need to take away from this is that, right now, you have a full 24/7 cooperating, full coverage, town of Southbury service, EMS service, advanced and basic both. It costs the taxpayers, right now, $139,858. That is the net of the contract price for the paramedic, after the fees that we rebate to the town, quarterly, monthly, in Geraldine's case. And, I have those numbers, but that's what it is. The town also pays another $34,150 to the volunteer appreciation program, which was set up years ago to compensate volunteers for uniforms, gas to meetings, and, and the like. That's total of 25,426 hours, both services on the volunteers. That's a dollar 30 cents an hour. If you can get that on the street, God bless. The fact is that whatever model is up there for the coverage of Southbury Training School, you will be paying for it. And the other fact is that, right now, Southbury ambulance and Heritage Village ambulance are covering the training school, and have been for the better part of a year. They had minimum staffing up there, and a couple of injuries sidelined them, and they could not get a legal crew together for that time. We have been signatories to the bait, the mutual aid program, all three of us, for the last 20 years at least. That's all I can account for. And it has worked. It has worked. And whatever model is up there, and there are a few floating around, for vehicles, personnel, and so forth, will be on your tax rolls, so they will. Right now, it won't cost you 5 cents more to do the same thing. That choice is up to you, but you should be asking these questions. 33,000 tax dollars have been paid for two independent studies of EMS, both of them, as it happens, by the Holdsworth Group. One of those studies was prepared at the behest of Mr. Michaels and the Finance Committee in 2010. I was there. And the upshot of that was that the paramedic, that was the question at the time, what's with this paramedic? It's difficult to understand, but they were just coming to it, except for Mr. Michaels. So, they had a study, and it said, basically, you have the most cost-effective deal out there, hang on to it as long as you can. And the only thing, I think, that would jeopardize that going forward would be if we had explosive population growth, or the demographics changed. People are getting older, that's true. The other myth that I think should be put down, right here and now, is the idea that any hospital can control where the ambulance goes. Basically, the state laws are clear on that, and the ambulance services go wherever the patient asks to be taken, unless a life-threatening condition intervenes, in which case, the closest definitive medical care is the state law. And the paramedic will insist on it, regardless of who he works for. And that happens to be Waterbury Hospital at this point. That's where we are. It's 12 miles, it's 17, 18 over there, so, it's not that big a difference, but 84 is a problem. Now, Waterbury's better, and Danbury's worse, so. So, that is, is what's before you. And if you like the model you have, then let your representatives know it. Thank you.
So, I thought of a couple more things I was noting when you were talking, Jeffrey. And, it does in fact cost about a million bucks to start, to buy one BLS ambulance and, and outfit it. Now, we're in the EMS business, so, I think we'll know, I think we know, and you could buy, you know, you could buy a used, cheaper ambulance, but it's a million bucks, you know, to, to outfit that thing from front to back. So, you're talking about three ambulances, because you're talking about one BLS ambulance for the training school, two non-transport, non-emergency transport cars, and two non-transport medics. So, that's three ambulances. And, let's just take the cost of a medic at $30 an hour, 24/7. $306,000. And you're going to put on two medics. Okay, so, that, these are the, these are the things that are part of this 5 million dollars, that is, is set an estimated startup cost of 5 million dollars. Who's going to pay for that? The people behind me. Also, on September 17th, you know, this is not a takeover? Well, read the minutes Mr. Michaels stated in the finance meeting on September 17th. The potential takeover. Okay? Public record, everybody, they're right on the town website, potential takeover. So, it is a takeover. Southbury ambulance, and this board of selectmen knows, that Southbury ambulance wants to go with a medic, again, and you stonewall us. So, you're going to stunt my growth to provide better and more service to the community, at zero tax dollar expense. The fuel, we get fuel at the Southbury Town Garage, and we pay for it every month. We get it to save the tax, rather than filing for the tax exempt to go to Hein Brothers-
I never said you got it for free.
I'm just clarifying it for everybody behind me. And, what else, what else does a town provide? The town of Southbury has a licensed PSAP, primary service answering point. So, that's, when, when you become a licensed PSAP, then that means you're going to serve 911 for the people. And I think we're part of 911. So, any other questions?
What does it cost a year to run the Southbury Ambulance Association with four ambulances at this time?
We're a million dollar business. Our 990 is on file with the fiscal office.
Is it a million dollars, okay, to run it? Okay? With four ambulances, okay? 24/7, 360.
I said startup cost, 5 million. Let's not, let's not mix words.
Okay.
So, your annual operating budget is about a million dollars?
Right.
And then, the capital, the capital cost of the vehicles, et cetera?
Is in, is in that number?
No, it's not in that number. Those are the startup costs. That does not include, that does not include the purchasing of, of the ambulances, of the four ambulances. That is the difference between an annual operating budget and-
Correct.
The capital costs that were required to start the operation, and that are meant to maintain the operation going forward. I assume you have a plan that in X number of years, the life cycle of an ambulance is X long?
Yes.
And you have to either do a capital campaign, or find the funding to purchase new ambulance?
We budget accordingly.
So, what, based on your budgeting, how much does an ambulance cost?
$250,000.
And is that fully equipped, or what? Is there other elements that come with it, or is that?
Yeah, you just said, you said a million for a fully outdated-
Yeah, and then you have to equip it. So, we, so we have four ambulances. When we replace ambulance one, we take the equipment out of that and update it.
Okay.
One gurney, $36,000.
So, is the 250 include?
This ALS that I want to start up, 80 grand, just to start it. Okay, that's Southbury ambulance, fully invested, that's, our billing monies and the donations that we get, were our one fundraiser letter a year.
Geraldine, do you support the town, and, just as Joe Public, do you support the town doing a fiscal analysis to determine whether it is fruitful for the town to get into the business of the ambulance service or not?
I think if you look at the 2010, 2013, and whatever you had Fitch do this year, that was not mentioned, whatever that report cost the town, your answers are probably there.
Well, in the 2010 report, it gives six alternatives for operation, and, and some of them are very strong, but that, that, that report, that was accepted, is seven years old now, or eight, excuse me, eight years old now. So, I mean, doesn't it behoove the town to do a fiscal analysis of what it would cost us to get into the business of the, of paramedic service, as opposed to the fly car that we currently do?
Sure.
And, part of that analysis, wouldn't it make sense for the town to explore the various alternatives that are available to the town to provide this service? One option being the application currently pending, and I'm sure there's other options as well, that, you know, you've outlined. I mean, doesn't it make sense for the town to look at the various alternatives, the cost impact of each alternative, and make an informed decision that's, in the best interest of the public health and safety of our residents?
So, before I answer your question, let me ask you a question. Did you already do that study before you made the decision to submit this application?
No.
Okay. That's our, that's our point, board, that's our point.
And, and, and it is a point well taken, it is something that has been requested by members of this board for many months.
Right, I'd say more, more than many months, actually. I'd say, selectmen, bucks, ma'am, I, I think it was probably in our first term together as a board, made an initial request that we take, and I think in his words, was a more holistic view of all of our emergency operation services, because the second Holdsworth report, which was not adopted, the recommendations were not adopted, is now more than five years old. It is now more than five years old, and we all know, especially with technology-related matters, five years old is ancient, is ancient. And, and, and this, this, there has been, with Jason in the lead, I'd say, has been requesting time and again, that we do an analysis, not only of the financial implications for the town, but arguably, just as importantly, the- town, but arguably, just as importantly, the public health and safety ramifications of this move. You know, without, without, you know, exposing some of the information that's discussed in an executive session, because there are reasons to have executive session, I can state that this application was not reviewed by the members of the Board of Selectmen before it was submitted. And perhaps one of us would have caught that if it had been, if it had been, because in other cases, we've had a chance to review certain documents, et cetera, beforehand, so we did not see that point. And frankly, the application was not delivered to the members of the Board of Selectmen after it was submitted, unless we asked over and over and over again for it. And I still don't know if it was ever distributed as a whole to the full membership of the Board of Selectmen.
I believe I emailed that application
I got that, yeah.
to the five of, or all of you. I asked Noreen to forward it, and it was forwarded.
So I think, I think, I think both publicly, there have been discussions and concerns, some of it related to conversations we've had about the structure of the EMS committee, which I actually think this board is in alignment on, that there are issues between our charter and the structure of the current committee. But I am concerned that that was, that's really not the issue. There has not been a public conversation about this, and now we're being asked to, the truth is, it's not in the board's hands right now, frankly. We have been put as a board in a position where on, I believe it's the 14th of October is the, is the
Public hearing.
is the public hearing up in Hartford, where there is a potential that a decision will be handed down at that hearing, and the members of this board have no information on the financial implications of what this means, on the plan of action, should the town be granted this PSA? We've been told that there's a six-month window that we have to figure out what that plan is. Six months is not a long time when we're talking about a service operation that's been in place for decades upon decades and working well, with no expertise, certainly amongst our Board of Selectmen or our Board of Finance on EMS, providing an EMS service. And we have not been provided, and we have requested this as well, any information on what this means and what's in the best interest of public health and safety. Those two things could be done with a thorough analysis, which I'd have to look back at the minutes. I think it's more than a few months ago. I think it's in our first term, we were first asking for that analysis to be done fresh and new, because we were all a new member of the boards when we, when we joined, you know, two years ago, wherever, in our first term. And, and it was, it's been now five years since the last one. So, you know, I, I just, I think it's important that, that we have this conversation. I appreciate that we are having this publicly now. I think, you know, certainly Jeff and I have had a lot of conversations about that. I, I think it is important that we have it. But we're also at a position where I do feel like our hands are a bit tied. In a week's time, thereabouts, this town might be granted a PSA, and unless there have been meetings that I wasn't at, I have no idea what the town's plan is to execute against that PSA. I have no idea what the financial implications are, and I have no idea what the health and public health and safety implications are.
So let me back this up. The paramedic contract that we have currently in place for Campion covers the advanced life support. There's no change. The basic life support for Southbury Ambulance, Heritage Village Ambulance, will not change. The only piece of this in six months needs to be decided right away of how we're, what we're, how we're going to cover the training school side of it. There's a minimal amount of calls there. There are things that we discuss that can be done. Geraldine, I believe there's a thing called a carve-out, is that you told me about?
Correct.
That we could carve out and hand over to Southbury Ambulance, increasing their call volume for the basic life support, if that's the way that the board chooses to handle that side of it financially. That will mean that they will come in, handle the basic life support, take over the training school area, and we are still providing the paramedic contract the same as we are today at the same cost.
So how about this? How about you withdraw your application, you support Southbury Ambulance with the state VPH to say to Raph Kohler, the director of OMS, why can't the PSA at Southbury Training School revert back to Southbury Ambulance, which I have already, I have applied for, so you could support that, and we fight off Danbury Ambulance? It rightfully should come back to Southbury Ambulance. And how about a three-year plan? How about in three years, Southbury Ambulance takes over the ALS portion? Again, we're not a line item budget. But we, and we, and I've told this to every single one of you before, it's not something Southbury Ambulance cannot just take over the paramedic intercept as it is right here today, because you have to have a medic for each PSA. When you own those, when you own the PSA for the R5, you have to answer those calls just like the PSA for 911. So there is a plan, okay? And the 2013 plan was shelved because of, I think it's page three, it says that all the agencies have to agree to this in order for it to work. So prior administration was trying to ram a plan down Heritage Village's throat and Southbury Ambulance's throat. That's why it was really shelved. I mean, it wasn't going to work at that time. You know, could it work in two years? Maybe it could. The prices, people, and the players are going to be different, maybe it will.
You know, this conversation is almost too late, except for the option of withdrawing. We should have had this conversation a long time ago.
I said that when I started.
Excuse me, Geraldine?
Sorry.
We asked for it. Several of us did ask for that conversation to happen. So please do not lump us all together as being the evil one. We're not. We have tried to work through this, and I don't believe, and I don't mean to say that, Jeff is that either, I'm just saying that there was an opportunity that came up, action was taken. What's gone wrong here is the lack of communication. So what we should have, we don't have, and that's what we need to, that's what we need to start with. So perhaps, you know, a drastic thing of withdrawing the application is one way, or ask for a postponement of the hearing is another, a media conversation among everybody where we can have an actual session. We talk about things like carving out. I don't even know what that means in terms of dollar amounts to the town. I, I understand it's an option. We have two reports, now a small one from, from Fitch that also gives us information. We have a lot of information, but we have no financial analysis of it, so we can't make a wise decision. All we can do is make a decision that's either heartfelt, because we know lives are at stake, or potential monies could be gained or lost. So I think that we need to just take a step back.
So, again, I can't talk about the specifics of the negotiations or what we're doing or the meetings, but the state of Connecticut wants to shut down the emergency services, and there is an opportunity, a window of opportunity, that they're probably willing to deal with before they just shut it down. We've got a transition in place that can work. Once this is awarded, if it's awarded, we can control it, we can decide what to do with it, and it can include giving it over to the ambulance services. It can be turning the BLS over, it gives us the flexibility. And again, I know we're talking about that ALS PSA, but the conversation holistically for emergency services in the town has to include the fire department and the future of how to operate that fire department if we have to have paid firemen. The PSA for a paramedic gives us the control to determine if we want, if we have to have paid firemen, and it's getting more and more difficult to get firemen to respond. It gives us the ability to make, let those firemen be paramedics and recover their salaries if we have to. And this application, again, when you talk about cost, what money is, AMR, Campion Ambulance, Danbury Ambulance are for-profit companies. What they have is the transport license that is where they make a lot of money. This application is to take, ask the state to give us what they have right now to the town, and then we can control where it goes.
Go ahead, Judge.
Is this light now?
Yep.
Oh, good. I, I think, I would like to clarify a couple of terms. First of all, carve-out is in the existing state law. Carve-out refers to what happened when Heritage Village was built. A separate PSA was carved out of the original Southbury. Similarly, that consideration was given because of the special population that exists at STS. Understood? So when they put the PSAs, which are monopolistic in nature, and they said that at the time, and they also said, it's in the law, in the preamble to it, they said, we're not imposing these where, unless there's a need or it's the only way to control the situation. And the operative word there is control. Control who gets the paramedic, control whatever. Now, we are having a discussion about the fire department. And I understand that. But what I will object to is using EMS as a prop for either a police chief or the fire department. I think those issues should stand on their own merits. And we hear a lot of lectures about the well-being of the town, and we are as concerned about that as everybody else. And if there's been a complaint about that, or if there's been evidence that this town and its patients are in danger, unlike what was being said at that ginned-up thing that Danbury Hospital threw over here, it was an embarrassment.
Can this carve-out, could, could this carve-out return if we get the PSA for the basic life support?
You don't need it.
I'm asking, if we get the PSA for the basic life support of the training school comes to the town, can re, can the town request that that BLS for the training school revert back to, go back to, go to the Southbury Ambulance Association?
The way the law reads right now, that's what would happen.
We can do that.
Without an application, absolutely. And we're covering it now.
Okay, okay, this board can vote to do that and turn, once we have it, we can vote to turn it over. Okay.
If I, if I may make one other point. The business about a license for basic transport, I mean, not basic transport, I'm sorry, non-emergent transport. Basically, transport ambulances basically mean taking someone to dialysis. These are routine trips that do not involve life-threatening things, but they're more of a maintenance nature and they're less costly. And because of that, Medicare or Medicaid are the sole providers, payers of this. And I got to tell you, it's a bare-bones business. And that's why you see people like AMR, because they're doing it nationally. If you're running, you've got to run a thousand cars to stay alive doing it. Now, every one of the nursing homes we have in this town is owned by a corporate entity, and they negotiate their own transport at the corporate level. So even if you had the license to do this, you would have to go to every one of those corporations and negotiate your own contract. And AMR would oppose it, because obviously, they have a national business. And that set a precedent, that way, AMR would have a big issue. So
So if I may.
It'll be costly to even attempt that.
If I may.
Sir.
AMR is opposed to this, because they were also denied purchasing Campion ambulance, because the federal government felt that they would become a monopoly. So they're trying to control all the transport licenses, they do not want them out where other places. DPH seldom, I don't know when the last time, gives out transport license. It's a valuable thing. This is part of the application. It's something you can use, you don't have to use it, and it is in the application, because it's available through the training school, because they have that transport license. It's a tool that can be get, received from the town.
Training School has it, because they're a state entity. And that got slipped in by government a couple of years back. UConn was the first one to get it, and then Training School slipped in. And another correction was ALS, Southbury Training Schools, ALS, partially ALS, they were not paramedic. They had a couple of more enhancements above what George and I service have. They could do IVs, that's the only added thing they do. But remember, ABCs before IVs and drugs, okay? Airway, breathing, circulation, that all has to be done. The basic care has to be done before you get into anything extra. So that, that's a correction from early on.
So let me ask a question. This board, the EMS committee, which you were the chair, came before this board and recommended the fly car paramedic as a solution, working well for the town of Southbury, against the embedded paramedic for advanced life support that was part of the bid that, that Western Connecticut Healthcare had offered to the town. That's true.
Yes, the EMS committee recommended Campion's bid over the other bids that were received. That's correct.
When we talk about having conversations, how long after that contract did you come into my office and propose that we have a paramedic in town?
So the paramedic that I'm talking about is a supplemental to the system that we have to build to a 24/7.
And that was never discussed?
And that was what, eight months after the contract?
It was less than six.
Okay.
So, we're in a position now
So I'm not, I wasn't talking about an embedded with Danbury. Well, Jeff, the apples and oranges. Okay, I mean, you're, you're trying to defend yourself.
A paramedic in town was brought up. So I'm looking at this, saying, we can carve out the BLS, we are allowed to do that, we can do that in terms of basic life support. We're looking for the PSA, which nobody's applied for until now, and Danbury Ambulance is right behind us with an application, and we can decide as a board how we want to deal, how we want to control that once we do.
So let's talk legally. Legally, the Training School has not given their 60 days notice to relinquish that PSA. So technically, the PSA is not up. So you had inside information that nobody else did. So once the town of Southbury's application was received by Hartford, it became public knowledge, and everybody in EMS Connecticut got a hold of the application, they joined the bandwagon. Two, as of today, there's still no filing by the state of Connecticut, Southbury Training School, their 60 days notice that they're closing up shop, and their PSA is up for taken. Fact. That's a fact. Okay, so if and when it's available, my name is on the list. Southbury Ambulance's name is on the list for that PSA to be reverted back.
If, if I might, and, and before this devolves into a he said, she said, because I think we're all tired of that on the national level. I, I do want to correct something. During that process, that was during our first term, and as the liaison to the EMS committee, I was, I was pretty engaged in that, there were, it was not just that decision, it wasn't just the recommendation of the EMS committee that led to that decision, and it was, and a contract that we negotiated and changed the terms on with Campion to give us some more flexibility. There was also a failure by one of the parties to properly respond to the RFP that ultimately would have opened us up potentially to liability that also drove that decision. So I don't want this to, to just be positioned as, and it sounds like there are some aspiration, you know, some, what's the word I'm looking for?
I don't know.
But there's, there's some unjustified criticism being thrown there at the EMS committee, and some untoward criticism that's inferring, at least, that in the back pocket, they had this plan to want to put this in-town paramedic. I think that's unfair, and to the volunteers of our nonprofit organizations who run, I, I, you know, I, I don't want the town to think that happened, because I certainly don't believe because I certainly don't believe that happened. Part of the decision was driven by process and a failure to properly reply. During that process, the first selectman made a public agreement that we as a board of selectmen would begin to review the process of having an in-town paramedic. And to this date, despite us asking time and again to look at a holistic view, we have failed to do that. That has not been done. And in lieu of that, I give credit to Southbury Ambulance Association for coming to us with an idea to at least consider. And Geraldine is right. We just put it to the side. We just put it to the side. And there are complex issues going on at Southbury Training School. There's no question about it. You know, and, and they have large implications potentially for this town. It's been out there for decades that we've known about this. Those implications continue. But I, I don't want to conflate what happened two years ago with that Campion contract with what's going on now. They are not related. They are absolutely not related. As part of the negotiation actually, because we were going to be doing that research into an in-town paramedic. We agreed to do it. We publicly stated it. We said by August we would do it. I think we were going to start it three months after the contract was signed. We put in, we changed the terms from, I think, what was originally a 180 day out to a 90 day out or a 60 day out. So we could get out of the contract. Campion agreed to those terms with us. We were transparent and open in those conversations about why we were doing it. So I don't want us to conflate the conversations now with the conversations of two years ago when we were talking about that contract. And I don't want to disparage or imply any disparagement to the members of the EMS committee for making a recommendation because the, it is being inferred that they had an ulterior motive for making that recommendation. That is simply untrue.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a recommendation if we might. I'd like to do, delay any further discussion on the first selectman's update on ambulance services to allow the public, who's been sitting here patiently, to have their say. With the right that if a member of the board would like to continue the conversation of Agenda Item D, that we can pick that up after public comment? Does that, from a point of order, is that okay?
We can do whatever we want with the order of the agenda. I, I just, before we do that though, I just had a question based on something that came up in the last, back and forth with Geraldine and Jeff. On the, Jeff, you said that based on the application on the ALS side, if the application goes through, nothing changes. We still have our contract with Campion. And I, and I would like to explore that further. We could do that after public comment because I would like some clarification on some stuff in the application. The other half of it is the BLS for Southbury Training School. And this is the first I've heard about any carve out tonight and this idea that it, you know, we could just apply for it, take the PSA for BLS and revert back to one of our ambulance associations. And again, I mean...
Geraldine actually told me that...
So, so again, this goes back to the fundamental question that I've been asking for a long time. You know, right there, I see two, two alternatives. You know, the town applies for the BLS, PSA from, from the STS or SAA applies for it or the town applies for it and gives it to SAA. Those are at least three alternatives right there, right? What are the differences between each? What do each mean to the public health, safety and welfare of our citizens? What is the financial impact of each of those? Is it, is it fiscally neutral because it's the same people doing it? Or is there some procedural structure that's different and then has, adds layer of bureaucracy and requirements and protocols? I mean, those are a lot of questions I have about, about just, that's just one small piece of this. And we don't know the answers to that or, you know, if we do, I mean, if Geraldine has the insight on what, what the differences might be or you. But that's one of the things that we need to look at. What, what are the alternatives and what is the fiscal impact of each alternative available to us?
So the carve out rule would mean that the Southbury Training School geographical area, their PSA, would revert back to Southbury Ambulance. It would be part of Southbury Ambulance's PSA. So, nothing would change.
No change.
We would answer those calls. It would be no financial impact to the town.
So, so if you, if you apply for the PSA and get it or if the town applies for the PSA and gives it back to you, same, same result in the end, for the end user, for the, for the...
Uh, no, no. Applying for the PSA and the carve out are two different things. Applying for the PSA and getting awarded it as it sits right now, it's financially, a big money loser because you're talking Medicaid. Medicaid doesn't pay enough money to start the engine and drive to the hospital, let alone pay the people and put the supplies in the back of the truck. Okay, and you have to answer the first 911 call if it's, remains as its own PSA. Okay, the carve out allows it to come back to my geographical property, okay? And it gets rolled right into the 911 system that everybody in the other 88% of the town presently has. So we're talking about adding 6% more to Southbury Ambulance's 88%. Zero cost to the taxpayers. Okay? Last year, last year, Southbury Training School did 475 911 calls. Okay? It's not financially feasible. I couldn't do it. I can't put one truck over there with two EMTs.
So let me ask this. If the Southbury Training School were to give up their BLS PSA, it can revert back, it could go to Southbury Ambulance?
Correct.
If the town of Southbury, because the application's in place, receives the basic life support PSA for the Training School, can we give that up and let it go back to your geographical area? Because it's the same, whether the Training School owns it or we own it and we want it to go back, go to your ambulance, can we do that?
That's what the carve out rule was designed to do.
So we can do it once we take it.
Well, the last say is the government up there in the gold dome up in Hartford. And you get answers on the phone about as easy as I do. So that's a question that they have to rule on.
And...
But with your support, with the, with the, you know, the city of selectmen, your support, I believe that can happen.
And I believe it can happen too. Get it, hand the BLS back, turn that portion over to Southbury Ambulance on a carve out and they'll see why the state, because the state, this is eventually going to close and there will be no people there and that would make sense. But at this point, we have the opportunity to bundle this together and then control it as a municipality. And if the board of selectmen vote to do that, then that's what we do. But we have the ability to do it. So we can do that.
So to quickly, and I, I do think we should, we should pause. With Geraldine up there, I want to ask her one last question. But if everyone's right, I think we should pause on this. Let public comment happen. I assume, if you're here to not talk about this, maybe you should probably go first and then continue the conversation. But I do, I have, I have one sort of big question. And it was a, there's a, there was some conflicting information that was just shared by the first selectman and by you Geraldine. And that is the application by Danbury Hospital. You said two very...
Danbury Ambulance.
Danbury Ambulance, excuse me, Danbury Ambulance. You said two very different things. Jeff, you said that they have mirrored our application and your grave concern... Your grave concern is you, you'd rather have us be in control over, over that PSA than, and a third party, an outsider. Geraldine, you said that's absolutely not the case. They applied only for a specific element. So one, I'd like clarity on that. And two, if the case is that that PSA either went to the town of Southbury with the potential opportunity for us to assign it or it went to someone else other than, it could be Danbury or someone else other than the town of Southbury or SAA, where do you fall then in terms of your point of view and opinion on what it means to the public safety and the financial implications of, for the town on our EMS services?
Okay, so, Danbury Ambulance's application is for BLS. I read the application. They're not mirrored. That answers the first question. I don't want Danbury Ambulance to have that PSA either. But let me just say, Danbury Ambulance was covering Southbury Training School when Southbury Training School didn't have the staff. And so, I haven't seen it in writing, but it's my understanding that they were removed just as quickly. Southbury Training School lowered their ALS certification to BLS so Southbury Ambulance could cover them when they didn't have crews. Okay, and that's the way it's been since. So, they weren't answering calls. They weren't answering them in a timely manner. They weren't available. I don't know. And what, and what would change?
Geraldine, in a perfect world, if, taking several months off the calendar, going back in time, if we had applied for this PSA in conjunction with you, working towards just the BLS for Southbury Training School, would we, what situation would we be in right now with you? Because you've come to us offering a service of, of paramedic services Monday through Friday. Somehow in the letter to Jeff recently, you said that we're not cooperative. We're competitive now. So where would that, where would we be in that scenario?
I would have a medic already riding on call supplementing, showing that Southbury Ambulance is really, wants to move forward.
And if we have the...
And grow with the town.
If Southbury has awarded the PSA, which is essentially secured license for that, which we're providing now, can we still work, allow that to happen?
You're talking about the ALS, the paramedic?
What you're saying, a proposal
Right.
To staff someone during the day to cover that hours with our PSA. You would still be allowed to do that.
So don't take a fit with this, okay? But when the paramedic was approved, the stipulation was in August, it was going to be a study and answer by August. We're talking here now, well, if you agree, you can do the carve out and you can get the PSA and then give it to us. Okay, well, if your word wasn't good once, I hope it's better the second time. I did believe Jeff when he said he was going to call Hartford and change letter J on the application, okay?
I said I'd get clarification. I, I agree with you. We're going to get it clarified, no question.
Right, because you don't want, you don't want to be accused of a hostile takeover in Heritage Village and Southbury Ambulance.
No, where do we intend?
Understood, okay? So, I mean, we gotta have the meat and potatoes here. We gotta do what we're going to say and we gotta say what we're going to do. And a lot of people don't like me because I'm straight up and I'm being straight up right here and now. But you know, 40 years with Southbury Ambulance and a volunteer with this town since 1969, my reputation precedes me more than one time through. Okay, that's a lot of years, people. So, Jeff, you are still in diapers.
Easy there, but we do go a long ways back, Geraldine.
So, can we share a PSA? We cannot. Okay? If you get the PSA for R5 and Southbury Ambulance is billed up and says, hey, Mr. First Selectman, whoever it is, okay? And you're laying the groundwork here, okay? But, you know, next November, there could be six different people here and they're not going to agree. And that's always the problem. Every couple of years EMS is just kicked to the curb and pounced and, you know, volunteers run the town? Well, not when it comes EMS. You know, it's terrible. So, if you're going to put it in writing and we're going to have a contract, okay, and it's going to be all but in blood, to say that when we're ready to have our, have the R5 for Southbury and then we're ready to take over the next part and the next part? Absolutely. We're here for the people.
All, all, if this is agreed amongst this board that the basic life support, once it comes into the town and the PSA for the basic life support over at the Training School is either carved out, gets back, put it back into the Southbury Ambulance's hands, that will, it will increase your area and you will have the basic life support. And we can maintain the PSA until we feel, so we decide what to do with that.
The PSA for the ALS?
ALS, which we provide now.
All things being equal?
It, because there will be, as this stands now, there's no change in what Southbury Ambulance does, Heritage Ambulance does. Only the change is the Heritage, is the Training School ambulance. And we talked and I said that, that line J was not intended to infer that we were going to try and take over the, the basic life support of, of the, the two ambulance services.
Understood, understood.
Understood. And I think you know me long enough to believe that's exactly what we're saying. Nobody's here, has ever, that's, conversations never come up here on this board, nor has anybody ever said that. So we're going to, and regardless of what happens, we will, we said we would and I told you I would call Hartford and you, you've called Hartford before and you know how that works. And, and we all understand that. So, getting, getting late, George?
Yeah. Okay, so I have a board I have to answer to. But I mean, so, you know, I can't make any hardcore, you know, commitments here. But, you know, Southbury Ambulance is committed to the, to the citizens of this community. Heritage Village is, you know, committed to their community. And, and we want the opportunity for growth. And, you know, you keep using this word control. Now, typical government. You know, we don't want the government running EMS. We don't want the government running healthcare. If you think this is the answer for short term, then, I mean, you gotta be willing to have everything in writing you say that things are going to get turned over. I mean, you, you want the control to be able to say you have the control. You got some deal that you can't talk about? Well, it's a shame. It's a shame. It really is a shame. But, I mean, I guess that's politics.
Well, it was said that things do change. And when I talk about controlling the destiny, it does, in my opinion, mean control of all of our emergency services. And I just talked about the Southbury Fire Department and the concerns there. And if we have a contract that ties us in and things change 10 years down the road, whoever's sitting here is bound by the contract rather than saying it's in the best interest to create our volunteer, our fire department to have paid firemen who could all, they will not be able to make them paramedics because they do not have the PSA.
Which is exactly why this decision is serious and needs to be made with data and analysis, which has not been done to date. And I, and I think it's important to clarify, and I do want to move to public comment. I think it's important to clarify. This board is not going to be taking any action today on whether or not we're voting to approve the application. That's out of our hands. That is out of our hands. On October 14th, DPH will have their public hearing and either a decision will come down where we get it. Notice, it might get postponed and delayed, someone else could. I don't, I don't know what the outcome is. The only potential action I see that this, that this board could potentially take is the more extreme measure of compelling the first selectman to pull that application or to ask for a postponement of that hearing. We have not had that discussion yet about what the ramifications of that might be and there would be some. So, so I, but I think it's important that everyone in the room know that we didn't come into the room today with any expectation that this board was going to be having the opportunity to vote on behalf of the people we represent about whether or not this is in the best interest of the town of Southbury. And I, and I think that's a, a really important information, piece of information that might be lost in the shuffle here. But this does have, and I've, I've said this publicly, this has generational implications that people, six people sitting in these chairs a decade from now, and if it's one of us, are going to have to deal with, as well as the next generation of Southbarians who are here. So I want to, and I think that's been Jason's point all along. If we are going to make a decision that is so central to the public safety and the financial implications of this town, we need the information to do it the right way, in the most informed way possible.
Let's stop talking...
I was just going to say, I think...
The herring date is October 17th, to be clear.
Okay. I think, I think we can continue this discussion in a moment. I, I do agree with that because I've stated that multiple times. I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion until after public comment.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded and discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed and advocate. Okay. The next is a public comment?
Yeah, we're got, we're moving to public comment.
We're moving to public comment. Please state your name and address and please limit it to three minutes per person.
Yes, my name is Arthur O'Neil. I'm state representative here in Southbury and I live on, on Southbury.
Wait, wait a minute.
Oh, no, that's the right mic.
Do we have the right, is the mic working?
Just might need to move a little closer to it.
Okay. Go ahead.
A few months ago, I was asked to sign a letter of support for the application of the town. And this is going to be a bit of a continuation of the last discussion. Sorry for that. To sign the application, a letter of support of the application of the town, which has been thoroughly discussed. And I don't think I need to go into the details, which I was planning to, to explain why at this time. I'm telling you that tomorrow I'm going to be... I'm going to be withdrawing my letter of support for that application. I think the discussions been going on here[605.87][605.87](APPLAUSE) illustrates it very clearly. I just will say that I was given the impression, when I was first approached about this whole conversation, months and months ago, that this was something that this board had discussed, that the Board of Finance had discussed, that in fact, the people in the ambulance community had sort of reached some sort of consensus on, and that it was in the best interests of the town financially to do this. And I accepted all of that. I did not see the application before I signed the letter, and that's my bet. I have since seen the application, and you've seen the application, or parts of it now. And to me, it is as confusing as I think it is, everyone agrees now that it is, in terms of in one place it says one thing, and in another place it says something quite different, and it's hard to determine exactly what the intentions of that application are. I will tell you that it is, it is, you know, something that troubles me that I'm doing this. I have always supported the applications the town has made for grants and for other things in front of state agencies, and I feel really badly that I'm having to make this decision at this point. But I do not want the people at the Department of Public Health to think that I'm on board with this, and that that's going to be part of their decision to do this. And whatever doubts I had about doing it when I walked in here were certainly wiped out by the conversation that's been going on. I will say that you should clarify one more thing while you're clarifying. I did speak with the people at the Department of Public Health, and I asked them about the ALS versus the BLS, and what they told me, and I'm very clear in my understanding of this, is without a BLS, you cannot have an ALS. Now, perhaps someone at, at Public Health is misinformed, or perhaps I asked the question the wrong way, but as part of this conversation, that is a really basic element of the discussion. If you don't have a BLS, you can't have an ALS. And my impression from the conversation is, your ALS is dependent on the territory of your BLS. Most places, Southbury special, have only one ALS per town, and that that limits the ALS to that territory as well. If the ALS is dependent on the territory of the BLS, then that's a very different situation from the one that I think you're talking about today.
Thank you.
And everyone's discussing.
I'd like to hear more from-
If Art has more to say, I'd like to hear what Art has to say.
No, he's our state representative.
He's our state representative, have as much time as he'd like.
I make a motion that we have Arthur O'Neil added to the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion made, a second to add Arthur to the agenda. It's a proper procedure. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to, oh.
What's that?
It's going to make a motion to proceed to that item on the agenda where Art is now on.
It's the correct way to do it.
So, I mean, I was pretty much done at that point. The, the issue that you, well, the issue that I think, you know, you really, this conversation that I'm in hearing, as a lawyer, this is a conversation really that needs the lawyers who fully understand this aspect of law, and especially the administrative procedures that the Department of Public Health, Office of OEMS follows. And, you know, they are a very unique little group. And so I don't know who's representing the town in this matter, and I, I don't know if the conversations have been going on. I assume there have been some kind of conversations involving the board. But you definitely, I think, need to have a conversation to find out if you can have an ALS without an underlying BLS to support it.
That's the first I've heard of that, Arthur. You know, I don't doubt you, I'm just saying I wasn't.
And that's the first, you have to understand, we're working with Department of Public Health up there in the bureaucracy, and sometimes even they are not clear about what-
You can't have an advanced cardiac life support certification without basic cardiac life support certification. It's just something you have as an individual. Anybody can get BLS, but only professionals can get, be a professional of BLS.
Okay. We got to recognize people, so we can't just-
Anything else, Arthur?
No. I, I, as I said, I'm withdrawing my support for this thing. I'm not sure how this is going to play out, but from, based on the conversation, I'm sure I'm making the right decision at this point of not urging the department to go ahead with this, based on all that's been discussed here tonight.
Thanks, Arthur.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you, Arthur.
So we will-
Make a motion with-
A motion to return-
Can you hear me?
Excuse me?
Sorry.
Make a motion to return to our public comment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I second your discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your name, address, and please limit to three minutes.
Margaret Dionne Merivitz, 415 Laurelwood Lane, Southbury. I wanted to address you, the leaders of our town and the citizens of our town. Relative to my personal experience, it doesn't have anything to do with politics. I've never seen a spreadsheet for the ambulance service. But what I can tell you is that I became a widow one year ago because of the extreme incompetence of the very nice men who were on Southbury Ambulance. It took them about seven to nine minutes to get to my house, which is off Georges Hill Road, but that wasn't the big thing, although it bugged me. They were absolutely, totally incompetent. They didn't know any ABCs. I asked them to put oxygen on my husband, they did that. And I did detail in a letter that many of you may have seen, all the other things they did that were incorrect. The reason I know they're incorrect is that I've had ACLS certification for many years. I've been a nurse for 44 years. My husband, who died that night, had been a medical school professor and devoted his entire life to improving the outcomes of healthcare in the United States and abroad. What I really haven't heard here at all tonight is anything about medical oversight, quality assurance of medical oversight, that the quality of care that everyone receives, and everyone should receive, when that ambulance drives up to their house, is as good as it could be anywhere.
Thank you, and sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Public comment? Hold, Burke.
Hi, Art.
Good.
So I'm going to read, don't you, because my memory's-
Your name?
It's Bert Sibley. Live on Patriot Road. I'm also a 21-year volunteer EMT with Southbury Ambulance. I currently hold the Office of Assistant Chief. My EMS experience began as an EMT back in 1977 while living in Western Pennsylvania. Beside myself, my three adult children also volunteer with the ambulance as EMTs, with each of them starting at the age of 14. Combined, my family has over 66 years of volunteering with SAA. Reason for speaking this evening is to ask the Board of Selectmen, what is driving the town of Southbury to become an EMS provider, when the town already has two very well-qualified and respected services currently performing these duties? Many of us have already heard that the intent of the town is to provide EMS service at the Southbury Training School. This, to me and many others, makes no logical sense, as we've been hearing. Why would a new town government-run ambulance service attempt to start up when there are providers already in existence able to absorb the predicted increased call volume at absolutely no cost to the taxpayers of Southbury? As we all experience, government-operated services do not always practice fiscal responsibility, and they all cost us at the end. Our town will be obligated to provide the 911 coverage for the clients and staff at STS, but that does not have to be done at the hands of the town. The responsibility for EMS coverage within the bounds of STS is easily assignable back to SAA, again, at no additional cost or burden to the taxpayers. SAA, along with HVA, already covers these calls. As for the ALS, advanced life support coverage, why does the town want to create and build a new ALS service? We have all heard already this evening how the town wants to take control over the billing process maybe, and reimbursement for the current ALS contract, when in fact, as we've heard, the town already receives full reimbursement from SAA and HVA for ALS transports that we do. These amounts cover over 50% of the cost of the current ALS contract. The reimbursements to the town would be much higher, however, the ALS service that STS gets from the town is not reimbursed. STS does bill the insurance for ALS. Unfortunately, they keep the money and does not return any of that to the town. So if they did, that $140-some dollars would be, $140,000 would be a lot less, but we don't get that money back. Southbury has their application, as you heard, for supplemental medic coverage, filed with the State of, State Office of Emergency Medical Services, and we're waiting on the approval for SAA to place their own medic. Again, a lot of this is repeat information. The idea of an in-house, the idea of an in-town medic has long been part of SAA's long-term strategic plan. However, the process of accomplishing this takes time and planning to properly and financially execute it. The problem with the town, I'm going to end by, the problem with the town applying to start a new EMS service, be it basic or advanced life support, is disturbing. But more disturbing is that it's all been done behind closed executive session doors without consulting the current providers. This has been done behind our volunteers and town residents' backs. Thanks.
Thanks, Burke.
Thank you. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Nancy Tobin. I live at 271B Heritage Village, Southbury. I'm really new to this and all these acronyms, but one thing seemed to be clear, that the Southbury Ambulance Association already has a PSA, and you are applying for one for the town. And it was, it has already been mentioned that you could simply turn it over, the one that was at the training school, over to the Southbury Ambulance Association, and withdraw the application, and it would be a done deal. Is there some reason why something simple couldn't be accomplished that way?
We can't answer questions during public comment.
You can't answer questions, I think.
No, we just take the public comment. We'll take that up after-
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carol Renza, 799 Peter Road in Southbury. I found your letter to me very disingenuous in light of what Geraldine stated tonight and some questions which I raised to you. It seems every so many years, the Republican administration has to create an expensive boondoggle for the town. You all did it with the purchase of that useless mountain off of Exit 14, $5 million. You tried to ram an independent police department down our throats a few years ago, with several other people who helped me defeat it, still are here. And now here we have potentially another $5 million boondoggle. There is no reason to do this except to create another, by another bureaucracy at great expense to the taxpayer. And you can't, you can put up $200,000 costs all you want, like we heard about a town police department costing $117,000 a year, which you tried to feed us a few years ago. When will you people learn to stop, that you work for the taxpayer, and your job is to be, is to create a cost-effective environment for the taxpayer of Southbury, not keep going off on these, these ill-served building of bureaucracy fantasy ideas, which is going to cost all of us a fortune. We can't afford it. There's a lot of seniors in this town. Do your job, let the people who know what their responsibility is. I have to say this, we use Southbury Ambulance several times in the years recently, when my husband was so ill. They saved his life, meant on many occasions. And we have the experts in town. You can't tell me that this purpose is not, as I wrote to you, is not to create a new, a larger police department responsibility and bring in a police chief, which I heard here tonight, somebody stated. That's all I have to say. You're not going to, you didn't get through, get away with it then, and the Republicans are not going to get away with it now. And you can tell that to John Michaels.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Name and-
Green Foley. I'm Margaret's neighbor, and I was at her husband's going-away party. I'm a registered nurse and a Southbury resident for 27 years. And there's a machine right over there, and we're a heart-safe community. How many people in this room, right now, know how to use that machine?
Ma'am, you have to, please-
I'm just asking, I'm asking the question. Okay, when you dial 911, do you expect that the person who answers your call can use and has that machine? It's my question. That's the difference between basic life support and advanced life support. We can talk Republican, we can talk Democrat, we can talk money, but we can also move on into the 21st century and realize that when you call, you expect the best services that you can possibly render. And that wasn't what I observed in my neighbor's house one year ago. Maybe things are changing, maybe things need to change, but I promise you, every one of you, as a school nurse, I've seen, there's a dispatch problem. This is a nationwide problem, isn't just a town problem. But we all need to get on board, take a deep breath, and do what's the best interest of the people in Southbury. I'm not saying the ambulance services have not provided wonderful services for 40 years, but we need to move on. It's time to move on. So, put your swords down. When you, when the sheriff calls the deputy and says, so this is an interceptor, a paramedic, a fireman interceptor, what did they call the interceptor?
It's a fly car paramedic.
The fly car, for God's sakes. The fly car better have all the tools and the weapons in it that I, I need. That's why I called it. I'm not, I don't want to wait for somebody else. I want the services that I called for. I think people expect that. Now, when we dial from our cell phones, our cell phones go to Middletown. They don't go to our towns. It takes a long time to dispatch a 911 call. I've made 911 calls as a nurse. It's time to get on board a little bit and reevaluate a lot of things. Maybe this isn't something, maybe this has been going on, I don't know, but I definitely am shocked to believe that when you pick up the phone and you dial 911, you may not get what you called for. And if I need, you know, you can, you can also discuss the license you say we have for transport. I think it's terrific. I think we're lucky. I don't know how valuable that is. And if you say that that's something our town has, that not, that you can't get easily, is that right?
Yeah.
More or less, lucky us. We got grandfathered in, whatever it is, but you can call an Uber, too. Do I need help out of the bathroom? You know, three minutes is up. Sorry, people, good luck.
Thank you. We got to get everybody through. Another?
And thank you for this.
Manakun Karalitsky. I'm a volunteer with Southbury Ambulance. I've been with Southbury Ambulance for about 10 years right now. I chose Southbury Ambulance over many other volunteer organizations because of its, the way they operate, the amount we provide for the community, their friends, we're family together. They are a place where I had many friends go through that actually became doctors, PAs, nurses, paramedics, just their footsteps were just getting in, just from starting with Southbury Ambulance. I encourage people in this town that runs the volunteers to come join us, okay? We're a great organization. We're here to help. I'm a little concerned, and looking, as a person from outside, is about this going ahead and starting up their own EMS here. For the taxpayers themselves, why would the town of Southbury taxpayers have to foot the bill for a BLS service for training school only? That concerns me. I also would like to mention, I heard through some chatter that there was a problem with, people had, were concerned with volunteers from out of town. Well, I'm one of them. I got, I'm not understanding what the problem is. Actually, you should be proud that people want to come to your town to volunteer, because it's a great place. My town doesn't allow volunteers to service.[1747.16][1747.16](APPLAUSE) I've, I've given up hundreds of hours a year, family time. I got a wife and kids at home. I do it because it's, I do it for the love of helping people. And this volunteer service should keep going, and it should not be taken away. It shouldn't be taken over. They should get the PSA for Southbury Training School. I did have a couple of concerns. If there's a problem with Southbury Ambulance, how come no one spoke up in the past? That boggles me. And my last concern is, when I see things like this out there, where everything's done behind closed doors, and people don't, don't talk what's going on, is there someone that has a job lined up for this? That people don't, you don't want to talk to, you know too much? That people don't, you don't want to talk to, you know too much? I'm just asking as an outsider. And another thing is, I was there when the tornado struck. I drove in because my town didn't get hit, but I knew that people here needed help. I came in to help out. We were out there with an ambulance, transporting people who were hurt to the hospital. That's what we're there for, and that's why we're great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Miranda Letty. Since I can remember, I have wanted to be an EMT with Southbury Ambulance. Please walk through my journey that began when Ms. White brought me to a Pom Rock Health informational event at the synagogue. When leaving, we saw a man had fallen down the hard, concrete steps, receiving a severe head injury. I watched in utter amazement as Southbury Ambulance pulled up to the scene and began helping someone in need. The two EMTs immediately started assessing the situation. They worked together flawlessly to assist the injured man to the stretcher for transport to the hospital. The crew saved that man's life. This was the exact moment I knew I had to be a part of this association. For many of us, the reason we are sitting in this room is the Survival of Southbury Ambulance Association. Not only would you be discontinuing 65 years of ever-growing history and ever-needed honorable service by passionate, determined EMS volunteers, you would also be taking what was once a young child's dream, and now a young adult's opportunity to serve a town that was built on volunteers. Many people have been touched by this association in meaningful ways. Some, some furthered their education to be doctors, PAs, nurses, while others pursued being EMRs, EMTs, and paramedics. Please do not take away our dreams of serving this town that has given us, that has given so much to, to the youth. Southbury Association offers a work experience that provides the youth with a chance to engage in caring and nurturing the people in our, in the community, and to gain exposure to a wide array of medical professionals. Why would you want to take such a valuable and needed opportunity from the youth of Southbury? Thank you for your thought.
Thank you. Public comment?
Loray Markantonio, Heritage Village, Southbury. I'll be short and sweet. First of all, the old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." That's number one. Number two, I applaud both Jason and Mike for saying they want more information. We need the information, no doubt about it. The health and safety implications, and the financial implications. I'm not going to get into the firemen or the policemen, but the health and safety and the financials and everything that's going on. And I applaud definitely our state representative for saying he no longer supports it and would just leave it as is. It is up to you guys, I think, to ask for a moratorium here and get more information available. Again, in the meantime, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
I wasn't going to get up and say anything. Ann Armino, 73 Pepper Tree Hill Road. But I'm disturbed at the fact that you put in an application without the selectmen, is what we heard now from Mike Rosen, from Jason, and from Jennifer, if that's what I understand correctly. After you do that, now you negotiate at a public meeting to give away something you don't even have yet, which really is befuddling me here. I just don't appreciate, and it's not a Republican or a Democrat thing right now, this is a town issue, and that's, that's when we have to stop, is this whole Republican-Democrat thing. This is a town issue. This is a resident issue. I don't appreciate that the Board of Selectmen weren't included in this. I, we elected all of you, and whether we agree with you or we don't agree with you, this is a group decision. This isn't a single-person decision, and it really upsets me that that's happening. Southbury Ambulance is a volunteer association, there's no benefits, there's no salaries, and there's no insurance, there's no medical malpractice that the town takes on. If we take this on, which now we found out, we're going to take that on, and we're going to have a fire department, and have to pay for that, so that's more taxes, we found out tonight, we're blocking professional companies from taking over this, this paramedic. The town of Southbury is not a ready-to-build medical. To bill health insurance is very difficult. I don't know if we're ready to do that. We'd have to buy equipment. This whole thing is just insane. We'd have to pay for paramedic's health insurance, their benefit, the vehicles, the equipment. Sounds like the mill rate's going to go for sure. Fuel, insurance, medical, medical malpractice, all these have to be addressed. Then we also talk about, okay, it's the reason we're doing this because the strategic plan came out. Strategic plan did not come out. It's a draft right now. It hasn't been submitted to any of you. So, all these things have to be clarified. So, I really think we should take the application, take it back from the state, and talk to the professionals. That's what I think we really need to do.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Dave Rentsch, 295A Heritage Village. I'm also a member of the Heritage Village Ambulance Board, as well as on the EMS Committee. Right now, if a call came in for the training school that somebody was having difficulty breathing, either Southbury Ambulance or Heritage Village Ambulance would respond, depending on which one was available. But there would also be a paramedic from Campion Ambulance responding to the town of Southbury per our contract. So, nothing, nothing changes initially, other than somebody stationed up at the training school, which is only a few miles up the road from Southbury Ambulance. Now, another thing that I want to address, is you mentioned about the fire department and having two men on a company ready to respond. We do a little over 1,000 total calls for ALS per year in the town of Southbury. That means a little, like 2.6, 2.7 calls per day, which means that these firefighters are going to be out on an ALS call, and it takes at least an hour for a round trip, so they're not going to be available in town. So, you have to have backups for the fire department, and you cannot run with two men per day because you just need more and more people. So, the easiest thing to do is to pull this whole application back, do all your research, look at it, and then re-submit what you want to. But why, why change what we have? We have a system that's worked. Nobody has come in here and said, "We want the BLS." If you, the, the state comes up and they go, gee, we got an applica, application here from XYZ Company that wants the PSA, the first thing they're going to do is talk to the town of Southbury, i.e. you, as the first selectman, and say, "Why do they want to come in here?" And you say, "We don't need them. We've got it covered by contract. We've been doing this for year after year after year. The town is supplied with the paramedic as well as BLS service." And on top of that, when you renegotiate another contract for a company coming in, whether it's Campion or whoever, you know, the tendency now is to want somebody stationed here in town. So, that eliminates all this big hassle of distance and stuff, which we have not had a problem all these years for the town of Southbury. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Public comment?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Maggie Disrow. I live at 14 Middle Road. I've been following the Southbury Ambulance Association's struggle to defend their organization from a hostile takeover initiated by the first selectman. Shame. Southbury Ambulance has provided the emergency medical needs of our community for over 60 years, and they are ready and able to serve for another 60 years. They do not get paid to go out and save lives. They do it because they love the job, and they're good at it. We should be honoring them for their selfless service, Mr. Selectman, not questioning and disputing their ability to serve and meet the emergency medical needs of our people. They have already proven to us their worth. SSA is a valuable asset to our community. They volunteer their time to the people of Southbury. We need to stand behind them, support them, promote them, and work with them, not against them. After all, Mr. Selectman, if you take the volunteers out of a town, there is no community. Shame on me, shame on you, shame on all of us if we do not support the very people that make this town our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Public comment? So, you know more public comment? I will close that portion of the meeting. Okay, do you want to?
I'd like to make a motion that we return to Agenda Item D to continue our conversation regarding the first selectman's update on ambulance services.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And carries.
So, so, first of all, to everyone who spoke, thank you. We appreciate it. We need to hear your voice. And, and speaking at least for myself, we should have heard your voices sooner, and asked to hear your voices sooner. I still am not clear on something, and if Geraldine is still in the room, or Georgia, I might ask you to come up. What I'm still not clear on is, we were led to believe, and I believe there's been information given even here tonight, that there is a lineup of people waiting behind the town of Southbury who wants this ALS PSA, and if we don't get it, oh, no. And I have no understanding, still, no clarity here.
Nobody said a lineup. It said Danbury Ambulance has an application in.
But, but do we know that? But, but we've been told, Danbury Ambulance doesn't have an application in for the ALS, they just have it in for the BLS. Representative O'Neill Art said that without the BLS, you cannot have the ALS. Do, do, does the first selectman's, or the first selectman's office have an understanding of what the actual, you know, actual facts are there? And again, without that, we are being put in a position as a board, again, we're not being asked to make a decision, but we're being asked to deal with the ramifications, certainly, come October 18th, if the meeting's on the 17th, we're going to be asked to deal with those ramifications, we're going to be asked, as we're looking to budgeting for next year, when we start in January, for, you know, for the next fiscal year, to, to look at what that means to the town. We're going to be asked to form a subcommittee to figure out what the plan of action is to do something now that we have the control. And I understand the concept, and I've said this to, to all of us here, I understand the concept of where, where we want to have some degree of, a measure of control over that, if there is a downside to someone else having control over it. And what I'm still not clear on is, what is that downside? And, and what is truly the benefit to the town of us having it over someone else having it, certainly of SAA having it? I'm just not clear. I, I, you know, I was hoping that today we would leave this room at least feeling like we have some more clarity. I can't speak for my fellow selectmen and selectwomen. I certainly don't feel that way. And I have real concerns that on the 18th, we're going to be asked, you know, the 17th, I think we have our meeting, right? We have a meeting on the 17th or 18th? I don't know when the next meeting is. But we're going to be in a position where this Board of Selectmen is going to put ourselves and future Boards of Selectmen in a position to deal with something that we have no idea what, what those potential ramifications are. There is a rush to get this done. There was a moment in time, I guess, that is driving it, and a concern that someone else might get it. But again, we just don't have information, and it's information that, shame on us for not pushing harder, frankly, to force that analysis to be done. But, you know, I've, I've been, I've been mocked at times by using the word compel in making resolutions, so I guess we couldn't compel this time. But we, you know, this is the one issue, frankly. We, we have made a real concerted effort as a board to not allow politics to get involved. We have, we have had respectful disagreements. We have almost always, though, come to unanimous decisions, where we compromise at times, but we come to an agreement. But in this case, I think there is bipartisan concern about the way in which this has been done and the lack of information we have to be informed. And, and nothing has made me feel better today about that concern.
So, again, I want to point out that if this gets awarded to the town, and they have, we have the ability as a board to decide what's in the best interest of the town, to, of how that should be done, and that can include the BLS going to Southbury Ambulance, it can be turning over the whole PSA for the ALS, along with the transport if we want to. It will, it will be the town of Southbury that will have that. So, that's part of why I believe moving forward with the application, so that we can make that decision, rather than let this, as the training school, as the state is wanting to close down the emergency services at the training school, which we all know, we've all been in a number of meetings, and I don't think anybody here would say that I wasn't told to make it the application, that it was to make the application, which I did. How that application was filled out is a, is designed to prove to the state that, should we receive it, there is a plan in place that can work, and we can sustain it, and we can do it. How it actually is done, once it's there, is a model we can, can design, or we can't, doesn't mean that for the rest of eternity, you have to keep that piece. But at this point, dealing with the state, with the shutdown of their emergency services, we were timed line into a point to do that. So... Jennifer, did you?
Jason's got it.
Two, 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 two points. First, on the, on that item that I keep hearing and we keep going back to, that we can apply for this, we can get it, and we could just give it to someone else. Do we have a written legal opinion advising the town that that's actually a possibility, and what the requirements would be to actually do that? Like, what are we relying on for that? That's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, Jeff, no, and I, I'm sorry, but, but, but no, nobody, well, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but a number of people on this board have not said whether they approve or disapprove of this application. And this application, which I only saw for the first time a couple of weeks ago, was certainly never discussed with the board. This application says that we're going to get rid of our commercial provider, which is Campion, we're going to buy ambulances, we're going to staff them, we're going to have a department, we're going to spend $400,000 a year, says all those types of things. And that, that is not, I don't think anyone's understanding here as to what would happen. So, my, my next question is, I keep hearing, and you said it again now, that, oh, this is just presented this way to, because this is what the state wants. Well, what are our obligations if we told the state that we're buying ambulances, hiring people, creating a department? What I'm hearing tonight is, oh, we just give it to Southbury Ambulance, or we'll just contract it out or whatnot, but that's not what the application says. The application is very different than the discussions, so I would agree with Arthur, who spoke earlier on that. It is, when I finally, when I, when I read through this thing, it's, it's, it's very confusing, because it's contradictory, and it includes items that, quite frankly, surprised me. And over the course of many, many, many months, a number of us had said that we want public discussion, we want all the stakeholders in the room, we want to hear from everybody, we want a third-party independent analysis to explain to the town what our alternatives are, and the fiscal impact of each of all, each of those alternatives. And once this thing was filed, all along, I mean, it's, it's a little disheartening to me that not only did we put on the screen when we had all these discussions, but you, you put on the screen the... that not only did we put on the screen when we had all these discussions, but you, you put on the screen the, how the length of the discussions to try and indicate to people that we were actually talking about the PSA application all that time. Um, a lot of those meetings were about other issues that we're not going to, um, discuss here. So, uh, that's what's been asked for repeatedly. And what we've said all along is, all right, you file an application, we're going to get our analysis to see what we're going to do. Everyone on the board, again, I don't want to say everybody can speak for themselves. Some people on the board have said, I, I don't know if I approve this or disapprove of this. I honestly couldn't tell you, and I couldn't, there's no clarity today whether I approve it or disapprove it. So, because we don't have that information, we don't have the tools available to us to make an informed decision. So what I have said at the last couple of meetings we've had privately, I'll now say publicly, so it's crystal clear um, to everyone here, that until I have those tools, until I'm given all of the tools I need to make an informed decision, whenever this vote comes up, my, my vote must be no. How could I support this? Unless I have all of the tools available to me to make an informed decision that this makes sense from a public health, safety, welfare standpoint, that this makes sense from a fiscal standpoint, um, and that we have a plan of action. This is very important, and this could have been done, this should have been done by now. And unfortunately, here we are, and that, that's where it is. I, I, I'm hopeful there's still time to do this. But that's, that's where I'm at, and it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone here, it certainly shouldn't be a surprise to you. Um, I've made this clear at Board of Selectmen meetings, at, in private discussions, and it, it's, you know, multiple, multiple, multiple times, and I've actually asked for it publicly, um, on a couple of occasions. A year ago, and about six, five or six months ago, we had this discussion when we were talking about the EMS committee makeup. We again talked about how we were going to get a proposal for services, to do a holistic review of our EMS services, and we talked about that, um, publicly. So, uh, that's, uh, that's where I'm at on it. Thank you.
Okay. Justin?
Uh, I don't really have anything to add to that. I agree that we need more information.
Jennifer?
So I didn't think I could be more confused, but, um, as you all know, maybe you knew before walking in here, this is a very convoluted topic. And, um, we have tried to get ourselves caught up to date on to, on what we do know by reading reports that have been approved and have been accepted and haven't been accepted. And there's a lot of, um, contradictory information. The, the application that was submitted to the state is, is not one that I supported. I did support Jeff applying for the PSA, but I did not support this application. We had conversations, and I must agree that I thought, well, if it's not owned and we have the opportunity to own it before somebody else might own it, that it did seem right to own it, but only under the auspices of getting a financial analysis. I am very pleased with our ambulance, our, our BLS providers, if you will. They've both come to my home, they, Heritage Village and Southbury Ambulance have provided exceptional service. And I, I too agree, if it's not broken, don't fix it. But I also wanted, as an elected official, to keep our options open in town and not to let somebody like Danbury Ambulance come in and take something that was rightfully ours. It is very evident that a lot more research and a lot more information needs to be provided to us. I have the utmost respect for Arthur, and if Arthur's going to pull his support of it, I, I, that's enough for me to want to pull my support for it. So, um, not that that matters, because I don't think that unless the board agrees to pull it on a majority vote, that it would happen. I, I do think Jeff was trying to do the right thing. But it's just, as is becoming very evident, a lot more than we know. And, um, I appreciate everybody coming out and having your voices heard. I am very sorry that this conversation didn't happen earlier. I personally offered, asked for it many times. And, um, uh, it's great that you come and have your voices heard, because we're listening. Thank you.
George?
A very, very difficult topic. I remember the first time I started thinking about it, getting involved, you started talking to me about what we're going to do. I found it overwhelming, the complexity and the lack of clarity and the confusion and all the different governmental regulations. I still, as Jennifer said, I'm probably more confused by now than before even. But I, I think it, I would just like to make it clear that this board, I'll speak for myself, but I think I can speak for the whole board on this. We have absolutely zero intention of taking over Southbury Ambulance Association or taking over Heritage Village Ambulance Association. We have never discussed that. I wouldn't support it for a second. I think they do a pretty good job. I think all the, it's unfortunate that it got out there into the public that we were trying to do this, because it is not what we're trying to do. I think having the PSA for ALS is, is an interesting option. It gives us control of that a little bit better than we have now. We're paying for it anyway, so, I mean, if we have that PSA for ALS, then we can control it, uh, better. I mean, what if Danbury Ambulance or somebody else gets that PSA, what happens? They come to us every year and they say, oh, this is how much it's going to cost, we need to pay it this much. And then the next year, they come and say, oh, it's going to cost this much. How do we say no? We could get stuck in a situation where we can't control the cost and we have no way to, no way to fight back. So I, I'm in general in favor of the PSA, getting the PSA for ALS. Now, the information that I've heard tonight, that you can't have the PSA for ALS without having, you know, doing the BLS is, I, I didn't know that. If that's true, then that's, that's something we should, uh, figure out, go from there. But, um, as far as the BLS for Southbury Training School, I mean, I don't see any reason why that couldn't be assumed by, uh, Southbury Ambulance Association. If, if, it's not going to cost the town anything, then they do a pretty good job, just let them have it. As far as paying money for consultants and, we've already done that. Paid, I don't know, somebody said $30,000 for the reports we've already had. I'm not a big one to paying money to consultants. If, if the situation can be figured out on our own, I think in this case, you might be able to. It's not clear to me what we would be paying for. I mean, what, what exactly do we want them to tell us? I guess that's a question we need to answer.
Okay.
Can we continue the discussion? Do we each get one chance, or?
No, 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 we have a discussion mic.
So my, my, of all of this, my, I do have real concerns about the, the point that, um, that Arthur made. Um, and it goes back to the, what, 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 what we've been told was an error in our application. But if the case is that you cannot have the ALS without the BLS, we are applying for a full Boundary Town of Southbury ALS, you're saying, we didn't mean to apply for the full Boundary Town of Southbury BLS. Representative O'Neill is saying what he's heard from his contacts at DPH is, well, you can't get the ALS for the full town if you don't have the full town ALS. That changes things. Is, am I, am I correct?
And, and I agree with you.
Right, that, that completely changes things. So again, there is a lack of information that went into applying, all right? A lack of understanding of what the ramifications were. To, to George's point, you know, we, we, we sat in, um, longer conversations until tonight publicly about the lighting on Main Street, looking at analysis, analysis and reports of the angle and the throw of the light and the output and the throughput. And in those cases, George, you were deep into the numbers. You're, you're the most data wonky guy amongst the, in this room. And, but in this case, that's what a third-party consultant does, is they give you information and, and a point of view that none of us have an expertise in. And we, I believe that we generally have made informed decisions based on analysis, smart facts and data from third parties. There was, part of the challenge is that, I think you, you've said, Jeff, we did approach Holdworth to do an update to the report. They refused to do so. I don't know why, but they refused to do so. There have to be other organizations out there who could have done it, but it just kept putting pushed around. It just kept putting pushed aside. And now we're in a situation where we have, I believe, as a board, um, one of, one of really two options right now. We can do nothing. And October 17th, this town might be awarded a PSA of which we have no real idea what the ramifications are. We are guessing. Or we can, as a board, move to request that the First Selectmen pull that PSA application. I still have not, I'd like to know, what are the ramifications there? What, what, Jeff, what are the ramifications there if we, if we did make that motion? Because otherwise, this comes down to when we're getting into budget season, and we approve, and we, we move to not approve any budgeting to support us having a PSA. I don't know what else we can do. And the question is, are we willing to do nothing? And I, and I don't know it, and what are the ramifications if we don't?
So what I, my understanding, that I'm told from DPH, they look at the first application and, and they determine whether they're able to do what they're applying for. My understanding is that from there, if you, if you pull it, they look at the next in line or whoever puts an application in next. So the concern is, and has always has been my concern, what if somebody gets ahead in the application ahead of us? Let's be clear about that. Somebody gets in with an application ahead of us, that is the application they're going to consider, and if they meet the criteria and they can give the service, they can be awarded that.
And we don't know who that is. We're assuming that it might be a Danbury Ambulance, but we, that's not public information, correct? We don't know who's next in line.
There, there, they have a, a hearing scheduled.
Okay.
Just, I forget how many days after, a week or so after ours. So, we can withdraw the application, and this was, I know I'm getting beat up here pretty good, and I realize there's all this going on. My concern was if it's up for grabs, an application goes in, we're not the ones in the door first. That's why I felt the need, that we need to get the application in, get our name in there. Otherwise, someone else can come in. My, it's my understanding from DPH, my information, that if AMR came in, if Campion came in, that, that if they put that application in, they have to consider it on its merits and possibly award it. So that was my concern.
Yeah, and I do want to say, I, I actually, I want to, um, I, I do agree with what Jennifer said. I don't believe there was any ill intent or any bad agenda here at all. I, I really don't. I, I, you know, I, I take Jeff at his word. Um, but we still have to make the right decision.
There's still a lot of questions that don't have answers.
I think the, I mean, PSA for ALS being acquired by an outside organization, what, how do we, how do we then control the costs?
So.
I don't understand.
So as I'm getting, I'm getting about this application going in and every, and all this, my concern is if an application got in before us and I said I was going to put the application in, the next application is what DPH looks at. So, I'll, I'll accept the responsibility for things becoming, um, the way they are, but there was no ill intent. DPH is telling me, next application, if it comes in, would be looked at, and that is a concern.
Couldn't, couldn't we, as the legislative body of the town, ask the state to pause? They never assigned the PSA before, and now there's this mad dash because STS may shut down at some point. Why can't we just say, as the six people responsible for policymaking in this town, that we would, pause?
So, I understand what you're questioning. There's another concern. We're going to have a change in administrations up in Hartford. Whoever it is, Democrat, Republican, it doesn't matter. It's a change of administration. At that point, we don't know who's in those offices and what could, might, they might look at or do differently. Right now, the mood is to, if you look back when we talked about, they're wanting to close the training school EMS services, which we talked about a long time ago. And you know, there's been meetings where I've had, one meeting where I had a car recess. They want to close their emergency services of their, over there, which is fire and the ambulance, and they want to get this to shut down. We don't know what the next administration is going to do over there, what they may want to do, or if they just say. I, I don't know. So, as, I know, again, no mal-intent. The, the closing of the emergency management EMS services of Southbury being imminent, they, they, they want to come up with a plan to do this. And the election's coming up, and the fact that if we don't get our application in ahead of other people, then they look at those applications on their merit. So, understand that.
Our, our number one, I'm sorry, Jason.
No, go ahead.
Our number one priority is public safety. And we currently are responsible for providing the paramedic services to all of Southbury, even the STS, right?
I believe that's correct. There are residents.
We do that through the intercept. That has not failed us yet, despite Danbury coming in and scaring everybody in the world that our services were adept and the flight, whatever, the, the intercept wasn't working. And then somehow, we made a quantum leap from being a recommend, the recommendation of the EMS committee to go with Campion, because they follow the process and have had a great service to our town over the years. To, and, and saying that's okay, because we had Danbury Ambulance come in saying, no, they could give us two, one, maybe two. They meant two in their application of, of in-town paramedics, so that might be better. And we said we wanted to do a, an analysis, and the analysis didn't happen. But somewhere in the application, we jumped to the fact that an in-town paramedic was the right thing for the town. So I think we should take a step back here, and we should say, we already provide the paramedic service, and as a legislative body, responsible for the 20,000 people in this town, we should say to the state, we want to pause on issuance of the PSA. Let it be and remain where it is, and let things remain where they are until we do an absolute fiscal analysis of what it means to A, get in the ambulance business, B, get the PSA, and possibly, um, outsource the functions out, and keeping the transport license and making the money and the offset of this, and have all the scenarios figured out before we are forced to make a decision. I understand there's going to be a change in the government up there, but we, we owe it to the citizens to, to be cohesive about how we move forward, and we're a little disjointed right now. So my, my suggestion is we do that.
So my, to that, if the state says we're going to move ahead with the next application.
I didn't say pull it out. I did not say pull it out.
Right, we're not saying pull it.
I'm saying, let's do the letter first, to see if we can get a pause. And then if we have to have an immediate, or an emergency meeting of the board before the October 17th hearing.
So, um, a.
Go ahead, Jim. It's a complicated thing.
Couple of things. One, I'll echo what some others said, that I, I don't believe that Jeff has acted in a way that is intended to be malicious or anything like that. I believe that he's had the best interest of the town of Southbury at heart in making these determinations. The frustration on my end has been that, you know, these discussions have been going on so long, um, you know, we, we really should have had this analysis by now, but we don't. And we're sort of in this situation, and we have a hearing coming up, um, and we need to figure out what we're going to do. So, um, to that end, I believe that we need, you know, one, we need that third- So, to that end, I believe that we need, you know, one, we need that third-party analysis, and I think the town should be issuing an RFP next week. I mean, enough of this just finding people and calling them up and whatnot, like, I believe when Holdsworth was hired years ago, I could be wrong, but I thought that it was in response to an RFP. And I don't, I don't remember, but I think we can issue an RFP about what we're looking for. We're looking for analysis for our systems.
What are you looking for, Jason? What kind of analysis are you looking for?
I mean, George, come on, we've been-
I just don't understand. I'm just asking.
I mean, we want to know what the options are to provide these services.
So, you're looking for like a holistic review of the entire EMS structure? And we've seen those with like Holdsworth reports.
Five years ago and eight years ago.
Right, they're old.
Very old reports.
But I don't know that the conclusions would change that much.
We need, we need, well, one of the options, I mean, Holdsworth lists some options. One of the options is, we give this to SAA, right? Isn't that one of the options? One of the options is, SAA and HV merge, and there's something like that. One of the options is, we develop this brand, you know, we do this. Holdsworth lays out these options, but there was never, the report was never accepted, and there was never a fiscal impact analysis done. You know, someone, I forget her name, but someone commented earlier on the independent police force that, you know, years ago, that, you know, that happened, and one of the issues there was, the town didn't really have a professional third-party fiscal impact analysis to actually determine what the costs were. So, people were rightly concerned, what are the costs going to be? Like, there's just numbers being thrown around, and that's, that's the concern here. What are the costs of these various options? What are the costs if the town withdraws this application, someone else gets it, SAA gets the BLs, and what does that mean to service? What are the costs if we get the application and we fulfill what we've said in this obligation, in this application? And what other alternatives are there? And what's the fiscal impact of each of them? I believe the town needs to do that. We've said, we've all agreed that we were going to do that. I believe that needs to be done. But in the interim, we have a, that's not going to be done, you know, within the next two weeks, and, you know, we have an issue. So, I believe that what can be done in the next week is, we need legal opinions on, we need answers to various questions. We need to know, what are the town's responsibilities if this application is approved? What are the, what are the time concerns? This application, you know, says we're going to do X. I'm hearing we want to do Y. What are the legal ramifications of that? Are we allowed to do that? What, what does it mean when we get the application? We need to know what the impact is the day it's given to us, and how much time we really have to get something in place. Because if the answers to the legal questions are, the responsibility of the town is, it's now fully responsible for these items, they have to implement the application as is, well then, we have a problem. But I think we need to know the legal requirements so that we can determine the next course after that. Because if the answer to the legal issues, and, you know, like, again, like Arthur said, this is a highly specialized area, certainly not my specialty, you know, I think we need to retain counsel specialized in this, and to advise the town on the legal issues. And then if those answers are satisfactory, then we have some time to deal with the rest, even if the town, oh, you know, the other legal question is, if we get the application on the 14th or the 17th, whatever, they give it to us, can we just relinquish it four months later? What if we do this analysis and we determine, wow, we should not have done this, can we just, can we just relinquish it? Can we say, oh, you know, we'll give it back?
If this application-
We need to know, we need to know our responsibilities and our obligations, because to do this analysis at this point, I assume is going to take beyond whenever DPH makes the decision. I mean, we're assuming they're making a decision in a couple of weeks. I mean, this is a state agency, you know, it's not necessarily certain that they're actually going to make a decision in two weeks. But, you know, we want to know how much time we have before there's a real impact. And then, along with, and then we can have a special meeting next week and discuss the results of that. And then on the same track, we need to finally engage someone to provide us with the substantive answers to the types of service and the alternatives and the fiscal impact.
If this application is approved, then are we then obligated to assume the PSAs? Or can we just say, oh, that's sorry, we decided not to do that?
That's one of the questions.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's a question I have. I don't know the answer.
We don't need a third-party fiscal analysis for that. That's a legal question.
Well, I agree with you on the legal issues. I think we should get some quick answers on that. I'm still not totally on board with hiring yet another consultant to review the same issues we've already had reviewed twice. Sorry, that's just my opinion on it.
But he didn't do a fiscal, Holdsworth did not do a fiscal impact analysis.
But it depends on what you're looking at. I mean, if you're talking about assuming the PSA simply for ALS, we could continue doing what we do with Campion, I believe, at the same cost.
But those are the discussions we can have.
So, what fiscal analysis do I need?
We could, we could ask, we could, we could ask someone to do a fiscal analysis based on the call Holdsworth planned from five years ago. I don't think that's the smart thing to do, because it's five years old.
Let's also remember that-
But we certainly could do that.
Let's also remember that, right now, ALS, without a PSA, and without basic life support PSA, is currently being provided by the town of Southbury, by a company that has paramedics at that level. So, I don't know if, people are telling me you can't-
Right.
Yet.
But under contract.
We're doing it.
But also under contract.
Correct, and that, and we can still provide, we said that beginning, we're still providing under contract in this-
But my concern is, this application specifically says we're not going to do that anymore.
Right.
It says that we're not going to have the commercial provider, we're going to replace that with the town providing the services, and that's one of my concerns when I saw this application, because that was never any of our understanding, that we would be buying ambulances and hiring staff and-
I wouldn't support that either. I think-
Right. So, but that's what the, so that goes back to the legal question. If we filed an application that says, says, give us this, give us this PSA, and this is the way we're going to do it, can we then just go and do it an entirely different way? So, we do need a legal opinion on that. I'd like to go back to Jennifer's recommendation, which I think is a good one, and I'd like, since Arthur's still here, I'd like to, Arthur, if you, I'd like to chime in. Would, would DPH award a PSA if the town believes, that has direct impact on the residents of our town, if the Board of Selectmen and our representative goes to them and says, we'd like to pause this process, this whole process, because the town believes it doesn't have adequate information to best protect the interest of its citizens? And what, how would that be taken by DPH, based on your recommendation, I know you don't know for sure? And is that a potentially a viable option for us?
Well, I'll try to answer that. Based on my conversations with the people at the OEMS, they seem to be amenable to some sort of people requesting continuances or postponements of things. The hearing that's scheduled in a few weeks was originally supposed to happen in September. So, I suppose if the town requested that there be a postponement, you've got the problem, of course, because there are other applications pending. So, I guess if everybody agreed to hold everything off for a while while you underwent these studies, they might be amenable to doing that. And if the applicant was the one that, in your case, on behalf of the town did it, they probably would agree to do yours. I don't know that they would automatically say, okay, because that one's being held in abeyance, that we're going to put everything else on the shelf until that one comes back to us with a yea or nay kind of answer. I just don't know the answer to that question. I'd have to call them up and talk to them, and hope that I get the person who actually has the authority to give me an authoritative answer.
Okay, not to make you, not to put you on the, on the block, but if we were able to pause, would you be willing to hold off pulling your support of the application until we came to a conclusion? Please?
Well, I, I, see, I think the fact that you need to do the pause tells me that it was a mistake to move forward with this thing at this point in time in the absence of the information. So, you know, that would be a real problem, I think, what you're, what you're doing. I mean, in effect, if you're saying you're kind of like postponing the application, if they were willing to do that, something like that, I, you know, I guess I'd think about it, but I really feel that, you know, I don't want them to have it on the record with me supporting this thing in the state that I now understand it to be in, which I did not understand it, and I don't think any of you really understood what this application said and what its implications were, and what it might cost and all that information that went with it. Your names, except for the first electman, are not up. My name is on the letter saying, please go ahead and do this. So, I have a real problem with, you know, saying, you know, I'm going to continue supporting this thing, you know, under those circumstances. I mean, I'm happy to make the phone call tomorrow and see if I can get through to people. I guess, you know, being a state legislator, maybe facilitates state agencies being more responsive. I'm happy to make that call to find out if they will take, make the effort to put everybody's in abeyance, but you need to talk to SAA about whether they are willing to ask for theirs to be held in place, and then the Danbury people, I guess, and I don't know who else might be in there as well. They need to kind of get all the parties, is it word, to the table, and have everybody agree to put a hold on this thing, and I don't know how easy that's going to be. But I'm certainly willing to make the call to try to get you the information, to find out if they would entertain a gesture in that direction.
Well, even more than the pause on the application, it's the legislative body saying, we need to do an analysis of that PSA. It is a pause, but it's more than that. It's us saying, we need to figure it out from a safety perspective for our town. So, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know how, how do you feel about a pause? How do you feel about a pause? Geraldine?
Hello?
Okay.
I think I'll agree with Arthur, David.
If you, sorry, Geraldine.
I think I, I think I agree with Arthur that, you know, you're coming to your senses late in the game. There's one application behind this, Danbury Ambulance, and you can ask for that one to be held off as well. Not necessarily going to be heard, you know, before yours.
It's late in the game, but it's not too late. Okay? Fair?
Yeah, it's, right, it's not the 17th, de facto.
Right.
You can ask, you can ask for a, not a pause. I think the technical term is, you ask for a continuance. You'll have Tinley file for a continuance, and you have to outline what the continuance is, just like I asked for a continuance in September.
I like pause.
You can ask, well, the terminology for the hearing is continuance, and you have to outline your reasons. And while you're at it, you're going to want to do the same thing for Danbury Ambulances, because that's your concern.
And in the best interest of making the best decision for the people of Southbury. I mean, that ultimately is our job. And I'll say, you know, I-
Thank you, Arthur.
It's thanks, Arthur. Thanks, John. I have, it's very upsetting that the residents of Southbury put us in this role, yet people in Hartford are going to make a decision about who provides service to our town without hearing from us. I think we should all be upset about that. So, I think, I'd like to find that information out if we can, Arthur, if it's viable that they'd consider it, because I think that, that if, you know, I, we don't have enough information about even the ramifications of us just pulling in, I think that would be an extreme measure. I think a good, a good next step is, to Jennifer's word, can we get DPH to hit the pause button, not just on our application, but on consideration of what they will do with this PSA for the town of Southbury for X period of time?
And we have extenuating-
And whatever the legal, you know, machinations of getting that done, I'd leave to Jeff Tinley or, you know, counsel.
We have extenuating circumstances. The PSA was never assigned.
Right.
Okay? Period.
Essentially, we have a de facto PSA right now, because we're paying for everything, and I think it would be logical for the state to grant us this continuation.
Hold, just hold on, the Assistant Chief of SAA is shaking his head no, so.
No, sir.
Jeff, Bert, why don't you come up, just so you can clarify, or Geraldine can too.
I think he means the responsibility of it, the ALS. I don't know, I shouldn't speak, I'm sorry.
You just said you're paying for all the PSAs, you're not.
I'm paying, we're paying for the ALS to Campion, and then we get reimbursed from Southbury Ambulance to maybe 35% or so.
No, maybe it's more like 55.
I don't think so. It's not the numbers I see.
Southbury Ambulance last year was 113,000, the Village was 40,000. That's 153,000 from your 280. That's about 140.
Are those numbers accurate? I mean, I'm not, I don't want to argue about numbers.
Right, and that goes to the need for fiscal analysis.
So, it doesn't have to go to the accuracy, but the fact is, the town has provided, for close to 30 years, paramedic service, that's a fact, under contract, to the town for almost 30 years.
Based on the recommendation of the EMS committee.
So, we have that-
But it's based on the recommendation, it's been based of our, of our volunteers who serve. That's how we ended up with the most recent contract with Campion. EMS committee came to us with a recommendation, we talked about it, we did it in executive session, we did it in public session, and we decided. So, thanks, Bert. But I think it goes to the point that we don't know what the actual numbers are. We are not clear, and we are being asked to make a decision with that. So, I think that the course of action would be to, both through Arthur, and Jeff, if you can, through your office, do everything in our power between now and the 17th, to see if we can get this paused, delayed, continued, whatever the legal term is. If there needs to be an emergency meeting of this board before our next meeting, we should do it. There is nothing more important that is on our plate right now than this.
I mean, we, I agree, if there needs to be a meeting, we should do it, but we should do it with 24 hours' notice, and it should be a special meeting, not, not an emergency meeting. We should, we should, we should have, we should know that it's coming up, and, you know, even if we know this is a special meeting and we cancel it, we can just schedule it and have it there as a placeholder, but I don't like-
Even if it's two or three days out.
I don't like doing anything at a, you know, I prefer notice.
Even if it's two or three days, we can always cancel it. Yep. Yep.
So, we don't have to take a motion?
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that, or we just ask that Arthur does that?
I just want to let you know that we make multiple calls to DPH, and Geraldine knows that I've been trying to reach them, and they're not, and I have not gotten return phone calls. So, a little bit in my defense, it's a very difficult organization to maneuver, understand, get information out of. I frankly was warned about that through other people, who said this is a very complex, because, complex and not always, there's not a actual list of things that, you know, you know, when you go on a website, click this, click this, click this. It's not quite as easy as people think it is, and if you've been, started, and I was warned about that, and as I got into it more and more, I realized how, how tough this is in the DPH OEMS and EMS world.
And I think Arthur said, it might have a little more weight coming from our state rep. You might also, I'd suggest, reach out to our other state reps to support this as well, you know, so it's not just Arthur fighting alone for us and advocating for alone. Call Representative Labriola, call Senator Berthel, explain where we're at, ask them if they would also advocate for us along with Arthur, as our representatives, to explain, and maybe, you know, maybe they'll get through faster than you, so.
Arthur, that's something you can do tomorrow, given the holiday on Monday, we're losing a day and-
Yeah, I mean, it's not on my calendar, 8:30 AM.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
Is Monday a holiday?
You'll let me know in my office.
Is that still a thing?
Okay. So, that's what we're, is there anything else here that you want to? See if we can get a continuance, I guess that's the technical term?
Whatever the legal-
Okay.
And I think we should try and, I think we should, I think we should go ahead and schedule a special meeting, maybe that week or the end of next week, whatever, you know, maybe Noreen can send emails around availability, and just to have it, to have it on our calendar in case some action needs to be made.
Maybe a week from today, Thursday, since we usually-
I'm not-
We can figure that out.
We can figure that out. Okay. We'll do that. Anything else?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Well, we're not there yet, we have to do announcements. I would like to read into the record all of the announcements and correspondence now.
Now, you're killing- Now, you're killing it.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
I can't take public comment.
We can't take it at this point. Thank you, though.
But you can email us.
You can email us, yes, sir.
This has been going on for five years and multiple times.
Okay.
All right, let's keep going.
Okay. Announcements and correspondence? Wait a minute, shall we make a motion to close this part of?
I don't think we need to. We're just moving on, we're just moving on to the next item.
No action.
Public comment, oh, yeah.
No actions, move, taken here.
Announcements and correspondence you have?
Yep.
The consent agenda is out there?
I move to approve the consent agenda, as is.
I'll second.
Made a second, any discussion?
I'm sorry.
Hold on.
Oh.
Sorry?
You know, this is something that can be dis.
Please, please, if we need to run the rest of the meeting before it's time to come back to work. Thank you.
Given the hour, this is something we discuss at the next meeting. But one of the items on the consent agenda is a resignation of another police officer. So, I'd just like an update on what we're doing.
On the, on the selectmen's update, I've got that. So.
I would just like to say, I'm sorry to see Corporal Hughes leave.
Yeah, he's, he's a, but he is just up the street. So, he has offered to keep us, and he is in contact with us and.
Is he going to Region fifteen, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
He is now up the street, so. All right, so, motion was made and seconded to take, to approve the consent agenda. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And it carries. Minutes of the September sixth, twenty-sixth.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
All of the minutes, the sixth, the twenty-fifth, and the twenty-seventh.
George does, because that can.
I'll second George on that.
Any discussion on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? It carries.
Streetscape, man.
I'm going to get you back for that one. I'm not going to forget that.
Next is the unfinished business we have. You've seen the review and recommendation of Taiyuan Ban, who looked at the, and it looks like it's okay. So, if it's okay with everybody, we'll proceed forward with a request for quotes for getting this done.
As long as the recommendations in the Taiyuan Ban report are implemented into the RFP. There was various recommendations to make the process better and the product better, I just want to make sure.
They were good recommendations, I thought, yeah.
Want to make sure those are all implemented. Yeah.
Okay. Yep. So.
So, what would the process be, like a RFP with the issues and then then come back to us?
Request for quotation.
I'll second that, but ask the question, is it going to be two different RFPs, or is it just going to be one? One for the lights themselves and a second one for the installation work?
It'll be separate.
Two separately, yeah.
Right, and we don't need to take any action on that.
No. No. All right, wheel set? We're good with that? New business, we have an IPOC resolution.
Motion to approve.
We have. Justin, you could probably speak to that?
Yeah, I think I may have actually touched on this a couple meetings back. You know, in the third quarter of every year, we look at the investment policy statements for the different funds. It's part of what our advisor, FIA, is, what they call their calendar. So, there were some relatively minor tweaks to the percentages, as you probably saw in the document, about how the money is allocated across different funds. And your initial suggestion came from FIA, IPOC approved them. After that meeting, went to the Board of Finance for their approval, which has taken place recently. And now, that's why it's here with us.
They seem to do a pretty good job at IPOC in figuring out where to put the money. They get good returns from what I've seen recently, anyway.
Yeah, they're doing very well. The advisor has been.
I think we're beating benchmarks.
We've been beating the benchmarks pretty consistently, even when the market's down, so it's remarkable.
Yeah, we've done, and with the amount of money that's in these funds, we probably should spend more time discussing them than anything else, quite frankly, the impact. But we have a great group, so. There's a resolution? Do I have a motion? I'm sorry? Per Appendix A.
For Appendix A.
Make a motion to.
I withdraw my prior motion. And make a motion to pass the resolution that the Southbury Board of Selectmen hereby concurs with the Board of Finance and the Investment Portfolio Oversight Committee and approves the IPS statement updates for target asset allocations as per Appendix A for the Library Gift Fund and the Reserve Fund.
That's the resolution, I have a motion. Second is made, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any position? And it passes. Okay. Selectmen's update, River Road and Jeremy Swamp, we're having, Department of Public Works is working on them. Again, we've had a tremendous amount of rain, it makes it very difficult to get this kind of work done. It's just a long, a very difficult task with the rain every day, including our road program. So, just know that this year's been very difficult. We hope to get it back and going in the spring. It's just unbelievable. I have a proposal from LOF that has been sent to me, and I have not had time to read it. Again, there's a lot of things going on, it's very busy, you try to do the best you can, and we move forward. So, I can forward the proposal to the board. I am going to put it on the next agenda so that they can come forward. We got through tonight, so we should, we shouldn't have a problem doing that. We're in the process of hiring more police, the police app is up, the applications are now closed. We have seventy candidates. Oral interviews are being scheduled, which is the next part of it. The town has reserved three seats in the academy for the end of December to get them in. So, we are moving forward.
Where are we at with the budgeted positions and open positions?
There's twenty-three budgeted.
Right.
Right now, we have, what do we, what do we have now for nineteen?
Seventeen, I think.
That was eighteen after Corporal Hughes. Eighteen after IPOC's retirement.
So, eighteen, nineteen, it will bring us up to twenty-one. We'll take a look at that when that happens. We, we don't want to, we were down to sixteen when we first came into office. So, we have to be careful not to put, we have to build it carefully and slowly. We can't put a bunch of this, this group all in the same block. So, we just, that's what we're doing, building backup. So, we're going to move on to getting the three in there, do the police app. We also, what we don't want to do is get applicants, if we find some good applicants. But if, if we can get three good ones, get them through, let them get on, let them get the FTO training, let them get settled in, and then take a look at what we're going from there. It just makes better personnel in the long run.
I know it's difficult to hire laterals, but once we hire these three, should we at least post it?
This is open to laterals.
Oh, is it?
Absolutely.
So, this isn't just three for the?
For laterals, none applied.
I see. Okay.
So, yes.
That was my other question.
Absolutely, and it was done before. So, yeah, I mean, if lateral to apply, it's, why wouldn't we? But they're not.
The class is at the end of December, we have three seats. Then there's a class that starts, it's either three or four months after that, and we have three seats, so we don't want to rush the process. By the minute you're ready for December, so we do.
Okay? Understand that, again, there's been a lot going on with tornadoes, fiscal office losing two positions. There's, there is a lot of things going on, and.
The Board of Ed thing, too, that took quite a bit of time.
Right. I, I'm not making excuses for what everybody feels and how it is. But just understand, there's a tremendous amount of going on at this time. And the fiscal, new fiscal officer gets in, will take care of that department, too. So, we've got a lot, a lot going on. Okay, reports from, any questions? Reports from liaisons, George?
The East Flat Hill Bridge Project Inspection Contract is putting together a little team to interview the bidders. There's nine bidders initially. I met with John Cotell and Ed Nagy on Monday, and we cut it down to five. I believe John Templeton.
Jim.
Jim Templeton. And somebody else is also going to join this group, and he'll be like, is there another person, Jeff, or?
I'm going to be there.
You're going to be there.
That's my understanding.
We won't listen to anything you say, anyway. But, so, yeah, that, that team will get together, review the five, actually interview the five. We're thinking thirty-minute interviews, like we did with the Board of Ed candidates. And then we'll pick a, pick a winner. I'm not quite sure how that bidding process works. I understand it's quality-based, QBS or something. It's not actually low bidder, so it doesn't necessarily go to the low bidder. I think, I got to learn more about that, but I think it's something more related to the, finding the best service, not the cheapest. Streetlight Project, I'm glad that's done. Just, just to make a note of that, we, well, I shouldn't say we, but Don and Hugh Sullivan, Don and Tilla and Hugh Sullivan, we settled on an approach back in December of last year. And because we had to go out and get a consultant, it, now we're just finally getting around. I, I'll not say anymore about that. But IT Steering Committee, there is a phishing test going on underway. So, if you're getting suspicious-looking emails, watch out for them. The Board of Finance has hired a company to do a, I don't know if it's Blumen Shapiro or somebody else, they're doing a phishing test to see if they can get people to bite on.
I think I have, I think I got one. It was pretty disturbing, and I was like.
I got some weird ones. Anyway, just be aware that that's going on.
I won't get into what it was, I'm like, okay.
The next IT Steering Meeting is going to be on October twenty-fourth. It's going to be a focus on cybersecurity and the Board of Finance is planning to attend, at least with a couple of people, or maybe three. Tax Abatement Group is starting up. Justin, you were on that for a while, and then I got on it. But Bill Tully is a chair, I really don't know how that's going to play out. There will be public hearings. He has sent out a lot of information already. If anybody likes it, let me know, I'll forward it to you. That's it, for me.
Okay. Selectmen Betty?
No update from EDC, they're meeting on the seventeenth, so we'll have an update at our next meeting. You've heard about what IPOC's been up to. It should have dawned on me at our last meeting, but the Committee for Town-owned Properties just lost one of our members when Don Antella retired. So, we're looking for his replacement before we schedule our next meeting.
Did we set that up as like a member of planning?
Yes, and that wasn't Don specifically.
Right, so it was a member of planning.
We're reaching out to planning to send us another person.
Okay, you are reaching out. Okay. Anything else? Jason?
LAPC, we heard from Scott tonight, so I think that sort of covered where that's at. Library meets next week, and I know this is under Mike's purview, but I'll just mention, I was at the Region Fifteen Board of Ed meeting on Monday. And I just wanted to say, I'm really impressed with the new superintendent. I, I think he's great, and I thought that, you know, they were dealing with a very difficult issue, media issue. And he dealt with it in a way where there were lots of questions presented, and he literally went out and answered every question in writing that everyone presented at meetings and that emailed, and he had handouts available for everyone at the meetings so they can have the answers to all these questions or had. It was great communication, and I thought it was very helpful to the process, so I just wanted to mention that.
Senior Commission has not met, Planning Commission has not met, Strategic Planning Task Force, John Montleone, Paul Butler, and I met with Jeff for several hours the other day, addressed some of his thoughts on the plan, and we hope to have a final version to you in the next week and hopefully for your review and maybe even approval on the eighteenth of October so we can move along with implementation. I, too, was at the Board of Ed meeting. I was impressed not only with the superintendent, but with the unanimous vote to move forward with arming our security guards in the schools. I think that is the right decision. It's unfortunate, we live in those times, but it's where we at.
Is that for all schools, or just for the high school?
Region fifteen.
All the Region fifteen schools.
Every school?
Each school will have an argument.
And I am pleased that our unanimous, yeah, our unanimous candidate did very, very well. She did abstain, even though she did get lots of answers to her questions, but she did.
And she did abstain, that was your concern.
We didn't have to tie our hands.
So, me?
That's it, yeah.
Parks, I did not attend Parks and Rec because I was, we were interviewing on Thursday, which was their meeting where we met Heather. But the one big thing that they're working on is with the summer over, members of the commission have been going around to do an audit of parks so they can put together a punch list for public works, damage and things that need to be done. They do it every year or two, so they can put together a punch list. And they, they started to make reports. I think at the next meeting, they'll have additional reports so that hopefully if there's not weather, public works might be able to get that out there before spring again to do it. EMS hasn't met, I feel like we've talked about them today. In Region Fifteen, I was not there Monday, but I did get a report from, from the board chair about how thrilled she was, both with our choice of Heather, the fact that she abstained, the unanimous discussion, and the very good discussion. I've heard just universally positive feedback on the new superintendent, as well as the new PHS principal, I've heard very good things about as well. So, that's it. Seven other things I'd like to talk about on the new business. Any other?
Hold on, hold on.
Any of them?
Any other business? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.